Well, welcome everyone. As a matter of preliminary components, my name is Pete Pecos. I am the Chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on our agenda are present and can hear me. For planning board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morse?
Yes.
Larry Murphy?
Yes.
Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Select board members, when I call your name, please respond with the affirmative. Alicia Greco? Alicia Greco?
If you go. Oh, there she is.
Alicia, unfortunately, we can't hear you, even though you appear to be unmuted. Do you have your headset nearby? Could that be the problem?
Oh, now, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Very good. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Yep, right. Jeffrey Walker?
Yes, here.
Jerry Heeby?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Town called, please respond the affirmative. Brian Weiner? Brian?
I am President, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond with affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Here.
Emily Noble?
Here.
Bill Hoyt?
I'm not seeing Bill yet.
Julie O'Brien?
Here.
Right. Anticipated speakers present and present us for our agenda, please respond with the affirmative. For the Gulf Center Public Hearing, Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center.
Eric, if you're here, can you raise your hand?
This is Scott Cameron. Eric is here.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. You are next on the agenda. Mike Lanham?
Is Scott, is Mike there?
Yes.
Okay, and is Michael Rosen with you as well?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. For 100 High Road, OSRD Special Permit Public Hearing, Mark DiPiero?
I don't see him yet.
Okay.
He will be here.
Okay, Arthur Costanzas?
I don't see him yet either.
All right. Steve Sawyer, are you here?
Steve may or may not be here.
Okay. Yes. David Grandi?
May I speak for a moment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Oops.
So this is Mark Griffin. I'm the attorney on the project team. I think the remainder of the project team believed that they would be on later, so they may not have logged in just yet.
Okay.
But those people you just named do expect, I do expect them to be on.
Beautiful. And that would include Tom Miner and Bill Buckley as well?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
It won't be Steve Sawyer, it'll be David Giangrandi instead.
Okay, David Giangrandi. Thank you very much, Mark. All right. So I just have some introductory comments. Good evening. This is July 15th, 2020, open meeting for the Newbury Planning Board. This is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order supersedes the requirements of open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which we can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convened by video conference of Zoom, posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the planning board's section of the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://backslashbackslashzoom.us and entering the meeting ID 83271413056. That number again is 83271413056, or by calling 1-929-2056099. That number again is 9292056099, on entering the ID number that we just mentioned when prompted. Please note, oh, just get this down here, please note that we have two public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting. One is regarding the Newbury Golf Center. It will be held jointly with the select board, and one will be regarding the proposed open space residential development at 105 High Road. Here 15, it will be held in the order in which they appear on the agenda. I have a moth flying around me, so if you see me swatting my hand, I apologize. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that the attendees are participating via video and/or telephone conference. So with regards to meeting materials, these were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state the intentions after each of you have been called. So we have some ground rules trying to make our Zoom experience and our meeting go smoothly. Before we can turn to the first item in the agenda, please let me just go over some ground rules. I, as the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of members, inviting each member by name to provide any common questions or motions. Excuse me, please hold until your name is called. For all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone. This can be done with by star six to toggle to mute or unmute, or on your computer with the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds for cell phones or tablets or cell phones. Thanks. With regards to speaking, which I'm having a hard time doing right now, please speak clearly in a way that will allow us to generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by this recording. For any responses, please wait for the Chair to yield the floor to you and to state your name before speaking. Board members will be called upon in first name alphabetical order to ease this process. If a board member wishes to engage, please go through the Chair. With regards to public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearing. After the board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment or ask questions. The way this will work is that we'll be using our technology. We will see questions and comments through the raised hand function. For folks on video conferencing, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participation participation option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. You would hover your cursor in this area if you don't see it. A window will open and it will display on the right. On the bottom of the participant area, you will see a list of phone video participants. And on the bottom, you will see the ability to click on a button to raise your hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. You may rename by using more functions next to your name. So it's very helpful if anyone's going to speak, if their full name could appear, just so we can be sure that we have identified you. Your last name, address, when the question is asked. For telephone participants, you can use your phone keypad while in the Zoom meeting to raise your hand. You would push star nine. I will then allow questions and comments from the public that have hit the raise hand button in the order which they are listed. The system will automatically keep track of who asked the first question. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his representative or the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you've been given the floor for your question. The board will continue down the list of those in the raise hand column and again afford participants or their applicant representatives an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be read into the record and again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not already been addressed. And my Vice Chair will make sure that I am sure of this. Each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll call. All agenda items will be handled in the same manner. Let's take note one. So I'm going to, at this time, go over to our agenda. And I want to pull that up so everybody can take a look at that, which is going to be over on this screen. You're going to have to have a lot of patience with me, folks, because we have lots of screens to manipulate to get everything to work in the world of technology. And I'm going to go to this one. And hopefully everyone can see that agenda. Does that look visible, Martha?
Yes, it does, to me, anyway.
Okay, so you can see our agenda here. And if we have the opportunity, Martha, do we have the ability to do our financial report?
Do you want me to screen share that?
That would be great.
Can I do that on top of yours?
We're going to find out.
Actually, this says it will stop your screen sharing. Do you want to continue?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm stuck yours. And just bear with me for a second.
It's all you.
There you go. So can you all see that?
Yes, and if you can lodge it, that'd be wonderful.
Oh, let me see what I can do here.
Or I can lean in and squint.
Sorry, I'll do it down here. Whoopsie. A little too big. So, let me.
All right. All right, I can probably go from there. So we have the Planning Board Financial Report for June 2020. Payroll and invoices are authorized. We need to read this at each meeting, so please bear with us. Number one is payroll warrants for the town planner and town administrator for payroll 20-25 for pay period ending on 6/6/2020. B is PR 20-26 for pay period ending 6/20/2020. C is PR 20-27 for pay period ended 6/30/2020. For planning board expenses, invoices, we have the Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad 6/30/2020. Employee expense reimbursement and tailor for office supply certified mail mileage of 6/22/20. And the employee reimbursement, Martha Taylor, planning books of 6/29/2020. With regards to escrow accounts, engineering peer review and site observations to Justice Walker, 6/29/2020 for AL Prime 23 Central Street. 6/10/2020 for 136 Main Street, Regal Solar. 6/10/2020 for Colentino slash Triple Q Inc., 108 Main Street. 6/5/2020 of 68 Green Street, Jackman. 6/5/2020, Newbury Golf Center. 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road. And 6/4/2020, Newbury Self-Storage Mansion. So I'll just take a second, just so folks can see, these are kind of the current projects that the planning board is kind of overseeing and negotiating. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 projects of significance that are requiring peer review. Thank you, Martha. Great. So are we coming up on 7:15? That's perfect.
We are.
All right. That's great. So with that, I'm going to go over to this. All right.
So the select board needs to open their meeting.
Okay.
So. Alicia. Good evening. This is July 15th, 2020. The open meeting of the Newbury Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the select board's agenda, which can be found on the select board's section of the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://backslashbackslashzoom.us and enter meeting ID 83271413056, or by calling 1-929-2056099, and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Now, can I please have a motion to open our meeting?
Motion made. Second.
I'm going to do a roll call vote. Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Alicia, yes. We are open.
Thank you, Alicia. The planning board is going to, is going to open its site plan review public hearing. Leslie, by chance, do you have the ability to read the public notice? If not, I can do that.
Um, I do not have it.
Okay, let me do that. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, note that on Wednesday, July 15th, at 7:15, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at the Newbury Municipal Building 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. In the second floor public hearing room. This will be held virtually via Zoom to consider the application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for modification to a previously approved site plan. The applicant requests approval of the proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work at 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road. Assessors map R43 lots 211 and 4B, as shown in the drawings entitled 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road Disturbance Plan of Land Sheet 1 of 1 dated April 9th, 2018. And 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road Buffer Zone Mitigation Plan Sheets 1 and 2 of 2 dated April 30th, 2018. And described in the supporting documents prepared by Meridian Associates and LEC Environmental Consultants, Inc. The applicant also requests release of a stop work order in order to implement the remediation plan and stabilize the overall site. The applicant is on file with the town clerk and in the planning office. Sweet 101, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. For more information or to obtain a copy of the application, please contact Planning Board Office at 978-465-0862, extension 312, or by email at planningboard@townofnewberry.org. The application may also be viewed on the Planning Board section of the town's website. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed restoration plan should appear at the time and place designated above. Interested parties may participate in the Zoom meeting from their computer tablet or by telephone by calling 1-929-2056099 US. And using the meeting ID 271413056, or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel 9 at www.tncTV.org by the Chair of Planning Board. Published Newbury Daily News, June 29th, July 6, 2020. Please note, this requires a simple majority, three out of five votes of the planning board. The original site plan approval was granted on November 15th of 2017. Over to you, Alicia.
So I am going to open the Continued Special Permit Public Hearing. The Town of Newbury Select Board also gave a public hearing notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, July 15th, 2020, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Select Board will hold a public hearing room to be held virtually via Zoom. Home, I'm sorry, Select Board will hold a public hearing at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. In the second floor hearing room to be held virtually via Zoom to consider an application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, Inc. for modification to the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center, 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road. Assessors map R43 lots 211 and 4B, granted by the Select Board on November 15th, 2017. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project, as shown on the drawings entitled 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road Disturbance Plan of Land Sheet 1 of 1 dated April 9th, 2018, and 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road Buffer Zone Mitigation Plan Sheets 1 and 2 of 2 dated April 30th, 2018, and described in supporting documents prepared by Meridian Associates and LEC Environmental Consultants, Inc. The applicant also requests release of a stop work order in order to implement the remediation plan and stabilize the overall site. The application is on file with the town clerk and in the office of the Select Board, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. For more information or to obtain a copy of the application, contact the Select Board Office at 978-465-0862, extension 301, or by email at selectmen@townofnewberry.org. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed restoration plan should appear at the time and place designated above. Interested persons may participate in the Zoom meeting from their computer tablet or by telephone by calling 1-929-2056099 US. And using meeting ID 83271413056. Or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel 9 or at www.tncTV.org. Submitted by the J.R. Colby, the Chair of the Newbury Select Board. It was published on the Newbury Daily News, June 29th, and July 6th of 2020. My note requires that a super majority, which is four out of five votes of the Select Board. Chairman J.R. Colby has recused himself. Approval of the special permit modification will require all four remaining members to vote in favor. Original special permit was granted on November 15th, 2017. I am going to be acting as the Chair for the Select Board's public hearing.
Thank you, Alicia. So folks in the audience, as you can see, we have two boards meeting to discuss this item on our agenda. And I just want to thank everyone for participating remotely and appreciate your patience as we do negotiate the technology to hopefully make this a smooth experience. So just a couple opening notes. The site plan review and special permit modification applications under consideration tonight are not new. But we have had to, we have had to renotice this public hearing due to the changes in the board's membership. The modification applications were originally submitted to the board in May of 2018. And the public hearings were opened in June 20th of 2018. There have been extensive prior proceedings on this matter over the past two years. The current members of both boards all have access to and have reviewed the record. The public should be aware of and should know that, that for the record of the prior proceedings, and can, these can be accessed and it can, and it can be relied upon that the boards and the applications, excuse me, during this quote "new phase" of the public hearing. So I'm going to request a motion from the planning board to incorporate all of our prior proceedings into this meeting.
Mr. Chair, if you'll permit, I move that the planning board acknowledge, affirm, and incorporate herein by reference the record of the prior proceedings in this matter to date in their entirety, including without limitation all outstanding orders and conditions.
Thank you. There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second on the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? I've seen any discussion. I will do a roll call vote. Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Larry. George?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, and Woody?
Yes.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, may I please request a motion from the Select Board to incorporate our prior proceedings?
If I may, Alicia, I move that the Select Board acknowledge, affirm, and incorporate herein by reference the record of prior proceedings in the matters to date in their entirety, including without limitations all the outstanding orders and conditions.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We got your roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike? Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion. I'm sorry, Jerry.
Well, thank you. Just for the record, I spent the last two days going reading the minutes of all of the meetings since 2017. So I just, since this applies to me, since I'm a member of the board, I just wanted the record to reflect that I have gone through, read all the minutes of the joint meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Any other discussion? Nope. Okay, seeing none. I'll move to another vote. Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, yes.
Mike Doyle?
Mike Doyle, yes.
Jerry Heeby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. So I just want to kind of set up parameters for our public hearing tonight, just so folks will understand what's going to be going on. First thing that we'll do is we'll ask the applicant for a full status report, including a detailed description of work done since February 5th, 2020, which was a session of our last public hearing to stabilize the site in compliance with the December 17th, 2020 motion. We'll also ask to have a revised schedule and sequence of work for completion of the project. And third, we would ask for a description of measures taken to address stormwater runoff in the site. So to now turn this component over to Eric Sorensen, Scott Cameron, Mark Lem, and Mike Rosen. Scott, will you be talking for the group?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Yes, I will, I will be starting the discussion tonight.
Great, thanks. It's all yours, Scott.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, I do want to reflect Peter's sentiments and welcoming us to this new format. And thank you for everyone here, both board members, staff, and public alike, for making the effort to come out to this. I happen to be enjoying this format, but I know, I know it's a touchy subject. So if I could ask permission to share my screen going through the sequence, start kind of a status report, would that be okay to share my screen?
I'm making you a co-host now. So you should be set to go.
Okay. And what I'll do is I'll go through this and I'll, and I'll stop to share to put the pictures, the faces back up. So what I did is I took the watershed plan that we submitted earlier in the week, and I marked it up to give a sense as best I could with regards to completed on site. There has been quite a bit of work done. If anybody has had an opportunity to visit the site, it is now, for the most part, a robust green throughout most of it, which is deciding, getting to that point. And so what I did is I marked up in green the areas of the site that I believe to be what I would consider fully stabilized and that the vegetation has grown to a point where it has established at least 70% success and could potentially be mowed, although it is growing out right now. So the entirety of the fairway mitigation areas, trees, stormwater mitigation areas, all complete, all with vegetation growing in. I did note there's a small area which is showing I did note there's a small area which is showing some peach fuzz. It was just, it was adjusted. I weren't happy with the grades a few weeks ago. So, the seed is coming in on that. That's why I showed that brown. There is an area in front of the tee box that is loomed and seeded, and that is starting to get some peach fuzz and grow in all around the tee box, inside the driveway. And then all the stormwater management areas are all loomed and seeded in this area. And again, you can see the seeds starting to germinate and come in. So, we do expect them next week to reach stabilization. Rest of the green is mainly on the side slopes of the stormwater basin, which has been set for quite a long time. Some of the slope on this, this really has been, the stormwater management systems are in this whole area. And then, of course, the blue would represent many paved areas, concrete or buildings on the site. And what's remaining for site work, really, I highlighted the area in orange around the buildings. This is almost entirely hardscaping and landscaping that is underway by subcontractors in that area. So, this is kind of finishing around the building. And then the short game area, which I highlighted in orange and crosshatched here, which also shares some of the shoulder of the driveway here. The expectation is to loam and seed this whole area in one swoop. But that's really, as far as site work is concerned, the contractor, Miller Golf Construction, really just has this area left to complete on-site, the short game, and then everything else is subcontractors. On July 2nd, Eric did prepare a list, list, which I brought. So, the first section is the site work. This is Miller Golf Construction. The loaning efforts, which have been ongoing, maintaining and adding erosion controls is directed. The short game area, which I talked about. And then, just really finishing, finishing touch-up work. You know, with some of the rain, there's some areas that need to be raked out, reseeded. That happens after the rain. But for the most part, it's holding up really well at this point. And then the second would be subcontractor work. A lot of this has to do with interior of the building. Second, the sheds have been delivered. They're in place. Grade installation is the catch. So, those have all been lifted to the finished grade and ready to receive the finished course of pavement. The propane tank is on-site. That will be installed. And then irrigation for the short game area, finished paving, curbing, and striping. And that's really the work that's left to be done, the schedule for which we believe the bulk of the site work can be done in the next two weeks. And something we hope to talk about tonight is actually another meeting in two weeks around the 1st of August to really, really button everything up with a final report. Before I move on, is there any questions on the, I guess, the completeness of the project and where we're at?
I think, Scott, what we'll do is maybe have you do your complete presentation, and then I'll do kind of a roll call to the members.
Sure thing. So, also submitted this week, and I know staff is still going through this, but we did submit a new or an updated stormwater management plan. Just some of the points of emphasis on it, the changes that were made to it, which I did summarize in a cover letter that we submitted along with the stormwater information. But we've been going through this. We've been observing the site construction. We'd have been observing soil conditions, ledge conditions. I have a really good feel, you know, what the actual site conditions are that may not have been reflected with, you know, limited soil testing and the information had in the original design. One of the bigger takeaways was really the degree of this, you know, the poor degree of the soil on-site. And that can be, you know, I think anybody that's been out there in any rain has seen that there's quite a bit of runoff, quite a bit more so than maybe what was originally anticipated. Really, the biggest change is updating the stormwater report, both the existing and then in the design analysis to reflect these observations we've made over two years. Those changes were made in reaction to those analysis points. We did change the mitigation plan to specifically address that. There was one kind of long infiltration trench around the perimeter of the property, and it really wasn't doing anything. And we're able to remove that, which would have just been a tremendous more of, you know, rock chipping excavation to put this thing in that wasn't going to do anything. And through grading and adding in new stormwater features, addressed the stormwater runoff that that trench would have done. So, we did remove that from the design. And then we also added in a new stormwater area right off the tee boxes here, which has been cleverly integrated into the fairway with some yardage targets in this area that Eric did a good job with. Really, this is to address the area immediately off the driving range area, the tee boxes, both in the grass area and here, to get the water runoff from this area. And the grading's in. We've seen this in action already. It is working. There needs to be some, the outlet control needs to be finished up. That's, that won't take too long to do. And then, for the most part, we didn't really have to change anything from the parking area down to Scotland Road. That remained effectively the same. We were content with the analysis of that, aside from making some adjustments to some of the, you know, the drainage system inverts and pipes that were just, they just weren't accurate on the original plans, or there was a condition that was encountered. All that drains infrastructure is in place and built well. So, we did submit those results, and I'll tell the staff on the town side as far as any further input on. That's where I'm left with an update on what is in. Our hope really, over the next two weeks, is to finish the rest of the work on the project. Eric is really close. He's had, you know, now that things growing in, I think everything is really starting to come together. So, thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Will there, anybody else be making a presentation from your team?
I don't believe so, but we're all here to answer questions if the board members.
Okay, great. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask our conservation agent, Bill, for comments and observations regarding the work on-site and on stormwater management from the materials that were submitted yesterday. And I'll just make note here, and thank Bill very much. He has made numerous, numerous trips to the site since he's come on board to help facilitate this process and continue advancement. So, Bill, are you here?
I am.
Wonderful. There you are. In the Hollywood Square on the bottom. Go ahead, Bill. Thank you.
Bill, new conservation agent, and I've been on board since June 1st. And I went up to the site, I believe, on June 2nd for the first time, and have been going out since then to observe the construction activities as they relate to erosion control and stormwater management, particularly in respect to conservation issues. Been up many times. Progress has definitely been made in the past six weeks. It's, the site has continued to stabilize. As Scott had mentioned, erosion controls have been put in place as recommended by both myself and Joe Sawaka and Mike Lahand, who works for Cameron Moore, I think it is, and who's the applicant's engineer. So, over the past few weeks, it's really progressed quite well. Site has been stabilized with loam and seed for the majority of the site, except for, of course, the short game area, which has not been constructed yet. The applicant, Mr. Sorensen, has been very agreeable and is working hard to keep the erosion control in place. The stormwater management areas are constructed in the front. The two on the front left-hand side of the driveway have been in place for a while, and they are completed and seem to be functioning quite well. I don't think that design has changed any from the original. There are obviously some changes in the landing area or the driving range area, which has all also been completed for quite a while. It's been reseeded and loamed and, again, the grass growing in that area, as Scott had indicated, that's quite well stabilized. No significant issues. There are minor ones, as you'd expect on a construction site. But they're addressed appropriately, or had been. As far as the stormwater management reports that we just received, haven't had a full chance to fully review those. I did a cursory view of them today, trying to compare them to the original design and what they proposed for the changes. They all seem appropriate. The changes they've made seem appropriate based on the soil observations and the conditions of the site. The basins appear to work quite well based on the design and their functioning. I do have a few issues with pond, pond one, which is the newly created pond in front of the tee boxes. Minor ones. They should be able to work them out. I believe they'll be able to work out the outlet structure and stuff that we have particularly issues with. And I think it would be easily fixed as we discuss it with them in the future. Joe and I are currently reviewing it. It'll be worked out, should be easily worked out with the applicant's engineer. The site itself is quite well stabilized. I don't have seen any issues in the past two or three weeks. We've had a couple of rainstorms that were quite intense for short durations, and there's been no significant issues on Scotland Road or in the wetlands areas. Everything seems to be well contained on the site. Again, there were some small erosion issues, but they've been addressed by the applicant. So, I think they're in good shape to continue working at the discussion of the board and commission. So, if you have any other questions, I can certainly try to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much, Bill. And just so, both boards, I think you received the stormwater management plan. That's a 60-page document that was submitted. So, it's probably going to take a little bit of time for our team, both peer review and for Bill, to work through the numbers and to work in coordination with Scott and his team to make sure that all components of the storm management plan are worked out. So, I've been told that that timeframe from the submission received yesterday would probably take about two weeks to get through that 60-page document. With that, I'm going to just allow the both boards to contemplate that issue. And the other thing that I just want both boards to think about is we are probably going to need to be doing a site walk of the area once we've had the opportunity to have the storm management reports reviewed by our peer review as well as our conservation agent. So, Bill, again, I want to thank you very much for jumping on top of this project. Your background is obviously extremely valuable, and I know you've interfaced very well with Scott and his team in helping to accelerate this. So, what I'm going to do at this point in time is I'm going to turn to members of the planning board, and I'm going to kind of go member by member to see if there are questions that might be currently on people's concerns from what has been presented. So, I want to start first with my vice chair, Larry. If you'd like to see if you have any questions?
I have one. What's the status on the vegetation screening for the neighbor's property?
Mr. Chair, through the chair, may I address that?
Sure, please.
So, I see the neighbors are here on this call with us tonight. I know Eric met with them last week. There had been about $7,000 worth of screening already put into place and earth, you know, so there was a berm installed and then evergreen plantings added to the berm. I don't believe there's final consensus on the extent of the landscaping and screening and buffering that will go on that side. It's that we hope to be able to work out with the neighbors over the next week or so. But that's where we're at right now.
Larry, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it sounds like you have a little bit more work to do then. Is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, I think, again, it's something we're trying to work through with them. There, you know, as of last week, open communication on it. So, we're hoping to come to an agreement on that, that satisfies, rectifies, you know, the concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Yes, I have my dog jumping up on me now. Currently, she's quiet, so that's good. George, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Scott, this is George Moore speaking. What material will be used for the walking trail going from the parking lot down to the short game area? It's a pretty steep climb up and down.
Right now, and Mike Lahand's going to correct me if I say this wrong, but I believe that's just going to be a dense-grated crushed stone path, so somewhat permeable, not paved, and I'm getting thumbs up from him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George. Leslie, I'm going to go to you next.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Screening was one of them, and that's answered. And so is, we have a stormwater report to review, so. No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Woody. Mary, do you have any questions?
Yes, Scott. Mary Stone, I'd like to know if you feel that the two-week timeframe on the issues that you need to complete is realistic? And if it is, and you encounter any issues on that timeframe, how would you address them?
That's a great question, and certainly something we've been debating on our team as well. You know, I think in the world, you know, Eric has a facility open at the beginning of August. I know there's some things we have to get through, both administratively with boards here and in combination with some, probably some more site walks. The two-week timeframe, we believe, is achievable. Or at a minimum, the site work that's left to be done is that could be, of course, whether, if it does turn on us, it is hard to do a lot of this work when it's pouring rain out and, you know, supply chain or the things. As far as where most everything that's needed, as far as supplies, is ordered and to be at the site, it'll loam, things of that nature, is set and ready to go. Site contractor is still on-site, John Miller. We really want to get him going to finish that short game area while we have him there. One thing we're concerned about that would, if he leave, you know, the equipment can only sit there so long. And then, everything else is really subcontractors. And if you've been up, there have been a lot out there. There's a lot of finishing touches being added on. So, some of the mats for the tee boxes and, oh, the golf balls, like, you know, things are, like, some of the finished things are starting to arrive. So, I think, you know, two-week is a realistic timeframe. And I would like to make every effort, try and push for that we can to try and get things wrapped up. I do know we have also the modified site plan, which you're seeing a preview of that with the, in this week. That is ready to go as well, I think, as soon as we're through the technical pieces with Bill and Joe. So, I, we're ready to pull the trigger and get that into you as well. I feel personally, we're into kind of final details here. We're two-foot putt to the hole and 18th green. You know, it's just working out the final details.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Alicia and your board for questions.
Okay, so, I'm going to start with you, Jeff Walker. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Alicia. My only thoughts are, obviously, I would like things to be long and be completed as well as they could be. If we're pushing towards some sort of preliminary occupancy permit, we still have the issues on, even though we decided we weren't going to have lighting in the beginning and some of the noise mitigation, we still have to have some ability to sanction the occupancy permit if those things are going to be reintroduced.
Would the applicant like to comment on that, or?
Sure. Thank you. I disagree. We are planning to have the specs for the lighting. As you recall, the lighting for the fairway is not on the table at this time. Really, it's just safety lighting in and around parking and active use areas of the property, more on a residential scale. So, we'll have the, with the modified plan when that goes in, hopefully, next week. As far as noise mitigation, I think, you know, we really want to work through and come to a resolution on any concerns with that. As far as noise mitigation, I think, you know, we, we really want to work through and, and come to a resolution on, on any concerns with that. In reason, you know, you know, you know, of course, in a timely manner. So I know Eric would be thrilled about a, a potential for a temporary occupancy, if we can achieve that. Get things up and running because that's also a great way to see how it's, see how it's operating. What kind of noise is it making? What kind of?
You good, Jeff? Okay, selectmen Doyle, would you like to have any questions for the applicant?
I just was really happy to hear when Bill Holt said that it survived those heavy rains in the last four days. That's like, if there was no damage to conservation area, that's, everything seems to be working. I'm very happy about that.
Okay. And select person, Hebe.
Yeah, hi, I'm, I'm new to, to, to all this, but I'm very happy to hear that you've made great progress in the last few weeks. And although I, I know the brothers are probably weren't happy that it was getting developed, I'm sure there were some happier to see a successful golf, golfing facility than a half completed one. So I'm very happy that you've made great progress and I, I really wish you folks a lot of success. And continued working. So it's great. Good.
Okay, so I just have, I have a question. I know, and I'm sorry if I missed you saying this. You said you were going to submit a plan next week?
Part of, part of the conditions that we have to meet is to provide board with a modified site plan that, that the boards are satisfied with. Our plan, you know, what we're doing in parallel with, with these meetings with the boards, the sidewalks, everything they're doing is, is constructing mostly in the fairway area based on these soil conditions run into. We've been constructing it and kind of design building it as we go. The plan we have together reflects those conditions. The, the calculations we provided reflect what we believe they're going to do. On, you know, a lot of time in this property. And so the piece of that is, is giving you that plan, that, that, that the modified plan that the board would be approving to close out this hearing process. And we provide an ad-built plan and certifications that it was built in according to that plan.
Okay, so you're talking about a site plan then?
A site plan, that's correct.
Okay, so I believe we also had a request for a landscape plan. I don't know where you are, where it stands without. It's one thing to stand out on the project and point out what needs to be done. It's another thing to have something in writing for the boards to see. Do you know where you stand with that?
It's, it's in parallel with that. We have one plan that covers both the site and landscaping as one, one joint plan.
Okay, great. So we can expect that to be dropped off next week, you think?
I, I want to talk to the, the town's consultants and staff first. And make sure everybody's on the same page with the technical aspects, the stormwater piece. Just, we have multiple times, but yeah, I think as soon as we're, we're comfortable that that, the, the technical part is they're satisfied that we would get that right into you.
Okay. And I just had one other thing that I noticed on the the map, this new site map that was emailed to us. There's a proposed gravel walkway that is down near the short game area. And the, I understand that you'd need a little gravel walkway to go from the parking lot down to the short game area. But this proposed, as it's drawn, goes all the way down to the street. Is that your plan?
So there's, there's actually, it's serving two purposes. The purpose number one is access to the short game area. Purpose number two is emergency access to the short game area and also backup to the site. So there's two points where the fire department or emergency services could get into the property. Mike Laham and Eric had already or previously met with the fire department to work that out. And, and the plan, the modified plan, we have details, what the fire department had requested, we, we put on the plaque.
Okay, so this isn't going to be a proposed gravel walkway for the public to use, correct? It's just going to be like an easement for national grid? Or should the fire department need to get in there or something like that?
You, you won't be able to drive a car up. There will be a gate across, a crash gate that the fire department would hold a key to and a knox box to open that up. It's not going to be like a fenced secure area. Somebody could walk up if they, they so chose. But it, it will deter anybody from driving.
Okay. And that's all that I have for questions.
I just want to ask any planning board members if they have any additional questions from the conversation that was generated. Larry?
I do not.
George?
No.
Woody?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay, I do have two letters to read into the record and we can do that. I just want to just touch base with town council very quickly if there are any comments from the town council perspective.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, thank you for recognizing me. I think the board can continue with the, the fact finding and hear the public comments. I'm all set for now.
Thank you very much, Brian. I'm going to read two, I'm trying to, I'll read two letters into the record regarding submissions that the planning board has received. Bear with me because I'm going to be using two different technologies here. The first is going to be from Claire Dixon. And Claire, I think I do see you in the audience or in one of the Hollywood squares somewhere. So I'll read this and then I'll read this. If you have any comments that you'd like to add, please let me know and then we can have you address those. But I do want to your comments from February 12th, 2020. Hello, Martha Taylor. Thank you for forwarding this email to Peter Pecos. Dear Mr. Pecos, I attended the planning board meeting last Wednesday. Yes, yesterday, Wednesday, yesterday, as I was heading to Route 95 on Scotland Road, I passed by the golf project in two roads. And chatting with Martha Taylor just a few minutes ago, she explained which one would serve as both the entrance and the exit and which one was the road for construction equipment only. She also told me that you, she would forward this email to you. My humble opinion is the following. The one closest to the highway, as it is designated to be both the entrance and exit road to the golf course presents a potential risk for both Scotland Road traffic as well as golfers. That particular road, because of its exact location at the bend in the road is dangerous. If both roads were going to be kept and used as one for an entry and another as an exit, this problem might be alleviated a bit, a bit as traffic from the golf course would be either exiting or entering, not doing so two directions at the same time. But if it is, this is, but if this decision were made, I would still make a second road closest to Route 95, the entry, because the oncoming traffic would at least see cars in the advance and vice versa. To me, it seems too careful. I have only one road for both entry and exit and to have the one closest to Route 95. I respectfully submit my opinion because, as I was told, Martha reminds me of the driveway to a yarn shop, which I go to Gloucester and which is located on Route 133 at a bend in the road. It's very dangerous, both entering and exiting the driveway, especially when exiting, which is when I am taking a left. I, in order to get back onto Route 133. I hope this helps. You may already have thought of this, reflex, respect each subject. 192 Highway on Newbury. So I'm good. Claire, is there anything that you would like to say in supplement to that?
I guess I, I would just like to know if, what, what is the plan for that? I mean, will there be lights or so on the highway there or what, what is in the development?
So I'm, I'm just realizing something that I oopsed, Claire.
Okay.
So hold that thought because what I'm going to do is I'm going to read a letter from Laura Hanlon and Frank Heemy, and then I'm going to open up for public questions, okay?
Okay.
Just saw that. My oops. Okay. Now I have to find where this letter is. Okay, I think I found it. Okay. Bear with me because I'm working between a couple of screens here, folks. This is dated July 9th, 2020. To the Newbury Board of Selectmen, Newbury Planning Board, Newbury Town Council from Laura Hanlon and Frank Heemy. Excuse me, Scotland Road, Newbury, regarding Newbury Golf Center. Dear members and board members, I think you also have this, so you can feel free to read along with this if, if my articulation is not that good. Please accept this letter in lieu of our virtual appearance via Zoom to the July 15th joint public hearing due to the lengthy passage of time since the last public hearing on this matter, February 5th. As, as the last four scheduled public hearings were continued due to the COVID policies and the addition of new board members, we would like to reiterate our concerns regarding lighting issues of the Newbury Golf Center, specifically the 650-foot tall light poles, each containing multiple LED lights that were proposed to run along both sides of the driving range. Two would be at the furthest most target green, which is quite close to our front yard and most certainly adversely impact, uh, uh, impact us. The proposed operating hours till 9:00 p.m., seven days a week, April 1st, September 14th, 8:30 p.m., September 15th to the 30th, and AP, October 1st to October 31st. Render such intrusive lighting an actual nuisance in a residential neighborhood. As you call, the proposed range side lighting was equated by the town hired peer review lighting expert Lucas Strum in his first letter to the town dated 9/6/2017 to what a commercial automotive retailer would use in a commercial setting. As directed by us, we have expressed our concern about lighting many times. We are reiterating this concern now in providing some context about the history of this issue because the public hearing has dragged on several years and there are some new board members. Both boards have assured butters numerous times that the town would evaluate the proposed LED range side lighting via the required lighting mockup prior to the issuing of any certificate of occupancy. Despite the applicant's repeated protestations about arranging for such a mockup, we do understand why lighting concerns are unnecessarily put on the back burner after the town's cease and desist order at the site made assuming a stabilization efforts superseding constitution to address. We are also aware that the applicant announced to both boards during this August 7th, 2019 public hearing that he had suddenly decided to table the installation of their range side lighting, the 650-foot poles with LED lights and desired instead to seek a certificate of occupancy without any range lighting. The applicant stated that he had learned that the poles were not going to be able to be installed at the locations marked on his site plan because of ledge. At the October 30th, 2019 public hearing, the applicant confirmed that the 650-foot side light poles were gone from his plans. Board members requested the applicant submit a revised site plan reflecting the withdrawal of the range side lighting. The applicant stated that he would be submitting a new plan, but it was not ready yet. Board members also also told the applicant that if he wanted to install range size lighting after opening, he would have to see new approval of any lighting plan and the request would be submitted to a new public hearing. An approval would not be guaranteed. The applicant stated that he understood this. At the next two hearings held in December 17th, 2019 and February 5th, 2020, the lighting issue was not further addressed because the issue of silt and water runoff at the site resulting in threatened fines by the town were more timely and urgent topics. We've been told that the applicant to date has not submitted a revised site plan reflect, reflecting a withdrawal of the proposed range side lighting. We would like to express our specific concern about the applicant not being required to submit what he was asked to submit. If the town considers issuing a certificate of occupancy without requiring submission of the revised site plan, butters would have no assurance of no range side lighting other than verbal statements of a person who has repeatedly ignored directives and admirations of both boards resulting in long-term cease and desist orders as well as threatened fines. There are only two ways that we see as appropriate avenues of handling the applicant's own change in his original site plan and the condition of the special permit with regards to lighting. He should either be required to submit a revised site plan as the boards have requested, or the board should incorporate specific written language in any decision rendered at the, let's end of this public hearing, which memorializes the applicant's own withdrawal of the proposed range size lighting and his understanding of, in a sense, to a requirement that he submit a separate request for modification should he seek further lighting at any time after being issued a certificate of occupancy with no guarantee of approval. To do neither would be to allow the applicant to do a quote, "and run around the lighting mockup" that was otherwise being required of him, which he was extremely resistant to for reasons obvious to us. The issue of visual aesthetics and screening mitigation from lights are also concerns as we have as the target end of the driving range is visible and adjacent from our front yard. We respect, excuse me, respectfully hope that the boards would consider our concerns and we appreciate the opportunity to express some. Sorry, Laura, I'm in Frank. Thank you for that. I apologize for my stumbling through that letter, that letter and the previous letter. I reveal the preview with complement or correct, Martha?
Yes.
Okay. With that said, we're going to ask any participants for public comments. The way that we'd like to do this is to have folks raise their hand if they'd like to speak. Just for a reminder, the way to raise your hand is to if on your computer is to go down to participants and go over the hand icon. If you're on a phone, please hit star nine. Speakers will need to unmute themselves using star six on the keypad. All speakers must please state your name, your address in anybody's and the members of the public will be recognized in the order which they raise their hand. And then I'll afford the applicant's opportunity to respond. So are there any questions from the public?
Claire was speaking. Sure. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to express this concern. I just wanted to know if anyone has addressed it because it seems like a pretty precarious situation on that road and I would hate to read in the Daily News at some point that there was an accident.
Thank you, Claire. Scott, did you want to address that?
As best I can, Mr. Chair. The entrance to the project, you know, it hasn't changed from the original and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I might ask for you to have people mute if they're not speaking because it doesn't, I'm getting a lot of feedback my end.
Let's see. I can help with that process. I want to meet you, Scott. Brian, I'm going to meet you. Galaxy tab. Okay, let's see if that works better.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. The, so the entrance hasn't changed from the original plan, which I wasn't a part of that, that process, but I'm going to presume that the due diligence was done at that time to, to evaluate that intersection. Now standing in it and operating it, you, you see how it functions. So Eric has taken some steps already to trim back the vegetation, looking towards the highway, prove the sight line in that corner. So he did that along the right away, heading, heading towards highway. And then the other part of that will be the component. You know, the sign for the, for the golf center that will go up to give drivers notice so they can see that sign before they see the driveway so they know where to come. And there will also be a familiarity component to this. As, you know, any new curb cutter driveway is put in, there's adjustment that drivers who operate in the road make for a period of time to that new driveway. It's in heavy traffic generator. My experience with these types of facilities, they don't generally get a peak, you know, a peak traffic generation with the commuter hours in the morning or the weekends. So just, you know, looking at it from the outside in as to what I would have been looking at as a, as a review. So reviewing this, those would have been initial takeaways, but I feel comfortable that, that the work had, has been previously done to, to safely evaluate that intersection.
Thank you, Scott.
I'm going to hold off any board questions with regards to that topic so that we can just hear from our next other comment. So I see a hand up, Deborah Carbone. Martha, can you allow her to speak?
She appears to be unmuted, Deb.
Hi, Deb Carbone, 123 Scotland Road, Newbury, Director Butter. We did meet with Eric about a week and a half ago. We did discuss, discuss trees and a fencing and he did buck us on some of the things that we asked for. Told us that he didn't think that a fence would be a viable situation and I have said this from the beginning, that I want a definite delineation between the two properties. And I am pretty insistent on that because I don't know who would cross over to my property and I don't want to live the rest of my life with that behind me. He did plant some trees. Unfortunately, when he planted them, he did not call me to tell me or even ask me what kind of trees we wanted up there. So we let that go. We will, we did a sidewalk with him. We were happy with what was placed up there, but we still have a huge hole behind my shed. And the berm that he put there is not satisfactory. It is not high enough. It is a huge, huge issue. I can see everything. As you talk about noise, I will hear everything. So that is a huge thing for us. It needs to be addressed before any occupancy permit is assigned to this because he's promised me things before, things were supposed to get done. They don't get done. In all respect to him, I don't trust him because he says one thing and does something else. We were supposed to have a plan last year. We met him last August and he was going to get us a plan, get us a plan. That never happened. There was an excuse. So I plead with you that I need to make sure I know what I am getting. And I understand right now with the summertime, things are filled in a little bit more, but we still have huge holes. And I know he has money put in an account for trees and whatnot when the fall comes and leaves are, are, you know, less. But as you have done, you know, sidewalks, you see, it's, it's huge. I mean, I'm watching them play golf now. He has some of his workers up there. I can see him from my kitchen window, never mind second floor. So I, I plead with you that no occupancy permit is even addressed yet until I get specifically what I want on that side. And also the lighting is a huge thing and I do respect Laura for putting that in. As you well know, we are pretty high up and I don't want to have to look at those lights at night, at nine o'clock at night. It's, was bad enough when the Pro Shop was lit up by mistake, I know, but unbelievable. We turned around one night and there it was, right in our face. So these are huge issues for a director by the, me, where everything is on my side. So huge concern for us and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Deb. And as I indicated, there will be a sidewalk that will be taking place. So the boards will have an opportunity to see what the site looks like now, which probably help address concerns that you're, that you've articulated. Thank you.
Will the pub, will the public be able to go on that sidewalk with you? Will we be able to go also, or is that just for the board members?
Martha, I'm going to refer you. We usually have just board.
Because we've gone before with you. We have gone before with you.
In the past, the Director Butters have been invited to attend the sidewalk. General public has not been because of liability concerns. So I would hope that at least the people who are directly active by the project would be allowed again to, to come on the sidewalk.
Thank you, Martha.
I don't see anybody else with public comments and I don't see any hands being waved. Okay. So at this point, what I like to do is kind of open it up to our boards for discussion. Any motions, any conditions, any additional supplement information from staff. I'd like to welcome that participation at this time. And so I'll go first to, to planning board members. Larry?
I don't have any further comments at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. George?
No questions right now. Thanks.
Great. Leslie?
The only thing I have to come up on is the, the concern that Claire Dix has. Will there be appropriate signage perhaps to show that there's like a blind driveway or something like that to warn people that are coming, going northbound on Scotland Road that they can recognize that they're going to be driving into something where traffic can be entering and exiting.
Mr. Chair? I think at this time, we're not inclined to propose, you know, we, traffic wasn't part of the scope of what we're, we're changing on this. As far as any warning signage and things of that nature that are on the, on the public road, that's entirely at the discretion of the owners of that road. If, if that was something that, that was deemed appropriate for Eric and say, you know, putting up a sign is not that big of a deal, but that, that really has to do, deal with the owners of the road. The, the signage I was referring to is the business signage that the Newbury Golf Center sign that enables drivers coming down the road to see that from a distance and it will stand out, pop out, giving them advanced time to, to break and turn it to that driveway. I, I do, I do recognize fly down that road and I, I, you know, there, there is a wide shoulder. And, you know, I guess I consider, I consider this, this is a matter that, that is, is something that was previously vetted.
Thank you.
Woody?
No, no questions at this time.
Okay. Mary?
No, I want to wait to see how things progress in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm noticing that Jeanne Cunningham, you have your hand raised. So as a, as a butter, would you like to ask a question or make a comment? You'll need to, hold on, let me, okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah. Jeanne Cunningham, a Director Butter, 143 Scotland Road. And in reference to the driveway, I don't know, a couple of weeks back, I guess, Eric and I and the gentleman he, I had to clear, actually walked the street. And from my driveway back to his driveway, I actually allowed him to do a lot of clearing of a lot of my trees, low limbs and, and all of that. I can tell you, it's a significant change. As I turned to go to my, towards Newbury Port, the, the visual, you know, it, it's just so much better in being able to see. I am concerned about the sign because my drive, my property is not far from the edge of his driveway. So what kind of sign is going to go where? Because now that's coming across to my property.
I think with regards to the sign, Mr. Chair, the original plans did identify a sign. We would be applying for a building permit for that through the building inspector in accordance with zoning. So it would have to meet in, and I believe the ordinance, the law, excuse me, does ask us to make sure it's not going to create any impediments to, to views. So that sight line from the driveway would be specifically something we look at. And of course, it does have to be on the property, which does, you know, the property line isn't out at the edge of the pavement. So that, that can sometimes be a little misperception. So there's a 10 to 12-foot shoulder between the edge pavement and the property line. Then the sign would be into the property from there. So we're certainly aware of it. That would be, I guess, a future, a future permit application.
Well, the, the slope of the land rises up quite quickly from the street, as you know. So, and like I say, my edge of the property is quite close to that driveway. So I'm just, you know, I don't, how are you going to be able to make something visible that, that well? So I, I don't know.
Thank you, Jeanne. At this time, Alicia, I wanted to turn it over to your board. And again, this would be an opportunity, if there's any thoughts, new conditions, any questions or any, you know, specific concerns.
Thanks, Pete. I'm going to start with Jeff Walker.
Thanks, Alicia. Once again, I'd just like to reference what I said before and especially listening to the letter and listening to Deb. I mean, in listening to Bill, and I'm glad he's aboard, and listening to Scott and seeing some of the work that's been done and hopefully anticipating being able to be open. I think probably one of the most, you know, one of the biggest stumbling blocks to really getting these occupancy permit is maybe our sidewalk and really doing a good job with Eric and, and the neighbors to decide what the, you know, noise or mostly the lighting impediments are going to be. So maybe even an evening sidewalk might be in order. But, you know, to get this golf course open, we need to make sure those are accomplished, whether it is offensive, whether it's good screening, because that could end up, which was my concern when I first stated it, making the process a lot longer.
Thanks, Jeff. Selectman Doyle, do you have any comments?
I kind of agree with what Jeff just said. It's like, I don't want to see the process go any longer. It's like, I want answers. It's like, see if we can get together, the Butters on a sidewalk and let's come up, let's get agreements done. I mean, it's, it's been three years. So let's get, let's, let's, we're almost there. Let's make sure everyone's happy and get it done.
Thanks, Mike. Jerry?
She's unmuted.
Yeah, you're, you're muted, Jerry. There you go.
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Doyle. The, the, the Butters need to be made happy and we need to see that it's up and running for all parties involved. So I think it's a, it's a good thing and I'm looking forward to going on the sidewalk.
Thank you. Okay, so I just want to add that I think a sidewalk is going to be tremendously helpful to all of us. I think that we may need two sidewalks because I'd like to see what it looks like during the day. But I also want to see what it looks like at night when the lights are on. I think maybe once we look at, and there's a mitigation plan made and the plants are planted and the holes that are there are filled, so to speak, that we can, we'll get a good idea of what it looks like from all different vantage points on the property, off the property. But then once that mitigation is done, because there is lighting and because this is in a residential neighborhood, I would like to have the opportunity to go on site at night when it's dark with the lights on and see what that looks like from the same vantage, vantage points. I think that's imperative to move in this project forward.
Okay, thanks, Alicia. I just, I, four bullets just popped up in my head. Martha, do you have any questions, concerns or comments at this point in time?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, great. Bill, do you have any questions, concerns or comments?
Not at this time. I, I just wanted to say that I will work with Scott on the, Scott and Mike on the drainage, trying to get that finalized. I assume the site plan he is talking about would be like an as-built site plan, showing the existing conditions as it had been constructed. We kind of need that for the final drainage review. What he's presented is, is a pretty good, comprehensive overall design. But I want to see the as-built conditions as well in the final. So. And then, you know, my job is to continue to monitor it, monitor the site for compliance with, with erosion control and stormwater management. So as long as, as long as we can do that, I'm, I'll be happy.
Alicia, I want to bring something back to the select board. You know, one of the things that we were trying to do was to keep this process moving forward and we have a planning board representative to help facilitate that. So the applicant doesn't have to keep coming back to a public hearing to have any release of any conditions. And we talked about having a select board representative.
Yes. So I believe that the whole purpose of a liaison is to help the applicant move this process forward so that we can get this completed, acceptable and, you know, open as soon as possible. So I'm going to, I guess, ask my board for a motion to appoint. I volunteer as the, I guess, the most veteran member of the Board of Selectmen that's been here since the application was first presented to the, the town. I've been to all of the meetings. I haven't missed any from 2017. I understand the whole history of the project and I am more than willing to serve in the role as liaison.
If, if that was the form of a motion or I'll make a motion.
I need a motion.
I think Alicia has a good point, even myself, who understands a lot of the conditions that, that have to do with building a golf course. Alicia's been, I had to recuse myself for the first year. So she probably is the most veteran person. And I think the job certainly maintains a high standard of understanding both sides and accomplishing all the needs of both sides. And I think Alicia could probably do that. So I make a motion that it be Alicia.
Can I have a second?
I will, I will second it. There's a lot to be said for seniority and where you've been on the board the longest. And I just, as long as it's, it's to help get, move things along and I think that's the spirit of it. And it's, it's not to add another layer of red tape to get things going. I think it's a good, I, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah. Without the liaisons, we would have to come back, post a meeting and it just drags everything out longer. We've gotten, I don't know, Pete, maybe you can speak to this. We've gotten this project moved along quicker. And now that we have Bill Holt on it, I, I, I just want everybody to understand that my role isn't to read stormwater calc's and to understand grades and to, because I don't. I rely heavily on the conservation agent and the engineer that the town hires. They make the, you know, yes, this is appropriate, no, this needs to be more work, needs to be done. And then me will just act as a member of, okay, well, we can move this project forward without having to come back to the board. So I don't make those decisions. Pete doesn't make those decisions, I don't believe. But we rely heavily on, on the, on the conservation agent, the engineer and the building inspector as needed. The town really step, and Martha, God, how could I even forget her? She's the glue that holds it all together.
Jerry, I'd just like to answer that too. As a person that would really like to see this project from day one get done because it's an immense project and it's caused a lot of disturbance and once it gets started, it really needs to be finished. The problem is, the devil is in the details in the last few weeks of pulling everything together for the occupancy permit. And it's just going to be, you know, just getting certain conditions on a few of the neighbors and certain conditions on stormwater just tied up. And Alicia certainly has to work, you know, in concert with both sides. And that's going to not be easy because Damon had to walk a tightrope and sometimes it wasn't easy for Damon too. So, but.
And if I ever feel as if there's something that needs to come back to the board, I, I will bring it back to the board. I, I am not going to act on behalf of the board unless it's something that is, you know, an easy, let's go.
And I, can I speak for a second? So after, after the election, I volunteered the day after the election, knowing that Damon was done. And I said to you, you're already representing on the liaison for Triton. You're already the liaison for the REC committee. Okay, you might be a vice chairman or chairman very soon. You might be a vice chairman or chairman very soon. And I said, I've got the time, because I haven't been put as liaison for anything. So that's why I said, and I've been part of this project for now over a year and a half, and I've read everything that's been involved in the project, and I've probably visited it much more than you do. I go up every two weeks to see the progress. So that being said, I was not in favor of you being the chairman for this, for the liaison.
I'm sorry you feel, you feel that way.
You've got your hands full already.
I, I am not the appointed person for Triton. I do not, we, board has never appointed anyone.
You, you got a new position with MMA? It's like, you're not a representative?
I'm on a, I'm on a committee that doesn't even meet anymore because of COVID. I'm not, okay.
I made my, I said my piece.
And Michael, she's not chair or vice chair yet.
No, but the thing is, she's going to be, she's going to be in the run-up, okay? She's in the running for it, because there's only four of us left, yeah.
So any more discussion from my board?
Move the motion?
I'm going to do a roll call vote. Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, yes.
Mike Doyle?
No.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. So Martha, I'm going to turn to you now for a potential sidewalk date.
All right. Just before we do that, I saw Scott raising his hand earlier, wanting to respond to, I think, something Bill said. So might he do that?
Yes, thank you, Martha.
Shot is a tack, Martha, and I had already forgotten I raised my hand. Yeah, I just wanted to note, what I, what I hope to do is to agree, and I can work with Bill on this, agree on the, on the design, really, in a similar format. And then, what I would be doing, following up on that, is an as-built certification that it complies with the design that we agree on. The same process that we do on any other project. I think the blurry line right now is we're so close to the end. You know, effectively, the as-built can almost be in hand, but it's just not quite there yet. It's not, it's not quite done. So just keep things moving along.
And Martha, I'm just realizing that Claire Dix has her hand up. Claire, did you want to add something supplemental to your other comments?
Well, I did. I did want to reiterate a little bit more of a concern with the sign, because when someone is exiting that driveway, that turn, even though the trees now, I understand, have been cut down, I do think it is precarious still. So I just want to go on the record, repeating that, I guess. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Martha, I'm going back to you for a site date walk. We have one more hearing after this, right?
Yes, we do. Well, I guess, you know, I guess one, one question that would be tied to a continuance date for this hearing. But it seems that it would be probably appropriate, possibly, to do within the next two weeks.
I say as soon as possible.
Now, it might be a couple of sidewalks, wanted to see the condition now, and possibly again, but.
Okay. So what are your recommendations?
I think it's really up to the board's convenience.
Mr. Chair, if I could opine, maybe we are ready to go. And I think it would be beneficial to meet, you know, we can be as ready as this weekend or Monday to have that sidewalk.
With, with, with the idea of a sidewalk before our next meeting, combined meeting, Alicia, when will be the next time that your board will be meeting?
Our board's meeting on the 21st.
21st of July?
Twenty, twenty eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry, 28th. Sorry, 28th.
So I don't know what your agenda looks like for the 28th. Is it possible to do a combined meeting, or should we look at a planning board meeting for our continuance?
That's a question for Julie right now. How full?
Yeah, it's, it's a, I will say it is a pretty full agenda. I mean, it's still in process, but because it's, you know, just once, one month.
Yeah, we haven't met since before town meeting, so it's going to be packed.
Yeah, so it's still in process, but yeah, it will be probably pretty full.
Does, does my board mind meeting on, on Wednesday nights in conjunction with the planning board? Does that work for you guys?
That works, that works for me.
If I may say, our next meeting is going to be on August 5th, and we already have three public hearings scheduled for that night. So I'm wondering whether, whether the boards might want to choose, but neither of them has a regular hearing scheduled.
What about what next, Tuesday night?
The 21st. I don't know, can the applicant be ready?
Can we have a sidewalk?
Yeah, we'll have to have the sidewalk on the 18th, but can he be ready to, on the 18th?
I think the other issue is that for.
ConCon has a meeting. Bill has a meeting. We have a ConCon meeting that night, Conservation Committee.
We need to post, Martha. We need time to post.
Well, we need time to post, and I think also Bill and Joe need an opportunity to finish their review. And it seems like that might take up to about two weeks. So from what we were discussing earlier, so it seems to me that probably the earliest we would want to meet would be the week of the 27th. So you've got your meeting on the 28th. We could look potentially at the 29th or the 30th. We'd have to check on the town calendar. No, actually, it doesn't matter.
I have a conflict on the 29th.
Or a night in addition to, as I said, we've got our next meeting on August 5th, which would put us at three weeks.
Would you want to consider the 30th for our continuance? And then we'd have to do a sidewalk in between?
30th works for me.
That would be Thursday. So let me just quickly poll the planning board.
Peter, I just pointed out the 30th, that's the night the ZBA is holding their hearing on the 40B on Cricket Lane off Pearson Drive. I don't know if any of the members would, I would be attending that as the planning board liaison. I don't know if anyone else might be intending to attend that meeting.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Our calendar seemed to be bumping here.
What about Monday that week?
The Monday, the 27th?
27th.
I work till 3:00, but after 3:00 o'clock, I can be available.
Okay, let me poll the planning board, and then we'll poll the select board. Larry, the 27th in the evening?
That's fine with me.
Okay, George, the 27th in the evening?
Uh, yes.
Very good. Leslie, the 27th in the evening?
Yes.
Woody, the 27th in the evening?
That's fine, Peter.
And Mary, the 27th in the evening?
Yes.
Okay, so I think the planning board is available.
Alicia? And I will do the same for the Board of Selectmen. Jeff, are you available on July 27th, the Monday evening?
Yes.
Mike, are you available July 27th?
Yes, what time, what time we talking?
Seven, 7:00 PM, Martha?
I would say, if that's the only thing on the agenda, yes, 7:00.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
Okay. And Jerry, can you make a 7:00 PM meeting on the 27th of July?
Yeah, yeah, for a sidewalk, right?
No, 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 for a here, a meeting like this, the continuance of the public hearing. And we're going to get a sidewalk in before that.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Wonderful. Thank you, Alicia. I would entertain a motion from the planning board for a continuance.
Before you do that, is there other, other business that you want to discuss or anything else that the applicant wants to request? And we still need to set the sidewalk time and date. Thank you, Martha.
Mr. Chair, I have two, two requests. One was the sidewalk and scheduling that. The other was permission to keep going forward, short game area work, seeing that that's really the last bit of site work we, that he has of major, you know, disturbance.
Thank you, Scott. Bill, I'm going to defer to you on a question regarding the short game area.
I have, I have no problem with that. We'll continue to monitor it. And the applicant has been pretty responsive to, and my concerns, if there's any concerns on the site, he's actually been pretty proactive addressing any concerns on the site that he sees. So I think it's a, it's a fairly reasonable combination to let them continue on the short game construction. And they do have a double, double layer of erosion control out there as well, which is, which is nice to have. So I think, I think it'll work out well. I think it'll be fine.
All right. Wonderful. Martha, since this is a condition, do we need a motion?
I'd ask Brian, but it seems like it might be good to have a motion to allow them to go forward with the short game area if the board.
Chairman, if I may make a suggestion. So as things stand right now with the current, we're calling them orders of conditions. The board's designees can do that, but since we are here at a board meeting, and you have the ability to get a vote of your board, I would recommend that you get that vote to amend, I believe it's the 1217, 2019 vote to include authorization to proceed with the short game area subject to the instructions and recommendations of Mr. Holt and the town staff.
Thank you, Council. I would take the motion as such.
I would so move.
Is there a second? Wonderful. There's a motion and a seconded discussion on the motion. Seeing none. Larry, how say you?
Yes.
George, how say you?
Yes.
Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Woody, how say you?
Yes.
Chair votes as well. Alicia?
So I would entertain a motion to allow the work on the short game to begin.
I would make the same motion that Larry made.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
And Alicia Greco, yes.
There you go, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Martha, do we have a sidewalk date?
Not yet.
I'm losing traction here.
We can try for Saturday. It's going to be quite hot, but we could do that, or.
Respecting that everyone's time is valuable. That might be a little bit more flexible than trying to get it in during the week. Okay. Let me quickly poll my, my board. Looking at this Saturday, perhaps in the afternoon. I am flexible on time in the afternoon. I want to say 2:00?
That'll be the hottest.
The hottest part of the day.
Yeah, 9:00 o'clock or something might be better, but.
9:00 AM, Martha Taylor says. 9:00 AM, Larry, how say you?
Yeah, I can do that.
George?
No.
Okay, I understand. Leslie?
Yep.
Wonderful. Woody?
This is for 9:00 AM on Saturday, correct?
9:00 AM on Saturday, yes.
That's good. Thanks.
I'll bring hydrating fluids, and Mary?
I can't do it, no.
Okay, all right, thank you. So from our perspective, that would work. Alicia?
So I'm going to ask my board, the 18th of July at 9:00 AM. Jeff, can you do a sidewalk?
Yes.
Mike?
Working.
You're working. You're out. Okay. Jerry?
Yes.
You can do it. Mike, do you work every Saturday?
Every Saturday, right, for the next three weeks.
Okay.
I work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday for the next three weeks.
We did say a weekend, guys, but, you know, where we can do evenings during the week, too. I mean, and Mike would be home and everything, is it possible to do an evening, like next week?
Well, I think, when were the applicant, when's a good time? When would you feel comfortable that you want the boards looking at it? Do you need time to do anything else? Like, do you want next week, the rest of this week?
We're ready now. I think the site's at a point now where it would be good to have his eyes on it. You know, to look at the screening, look at these measures, his concerns that were raised tonight. And I think it's close enough.
Okay.
Monday night, I could do Monday night, or can you, I mean, any time after 3:00 Monday.
I just, I have, I think everyone from the Board of Selectmen should be there, if possible.
Yeah, I agree.
Let me, let me repoll the planning board.
Hold on a second, Mike. I mean, excuse me, with all due respect, the 20th isn't going to work for me. So can we, any night from the 21st on?
Okay, hold on, we'll go to the calendar again.
I have a Conservation Meeting on the 21st, so I can't make it for that day.
How about the 22nd?
22nd would work.
I'm available that night.
Okay, let me repoll the planning board, the 22nd in the evening.
What night, what, what day of the week is that?
That is a Wednesday. It was a Wednesday, so we'd probably either reach 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. 6:00?
I wouldn't do 7:00. It's too.
Too buggy.
Yeah, 6:00.
6:00, okay. All right, Larry, 6:00 on the 22nd.
And I can do any evening that next week, and the 22nd is fine.
As you both, you hold on. I think I have a planning, I have a staff conflict, so that, that week won't work.
It's okay. I can do it.
Martha, you're on vacation.
I know. I don't want to delay the process, though.
Okay, we're back to the 22nd, folks. Do I hear 6:00? Larry?
Yes.
All right, George. I know, okay, thank you, George. Yes, Leslie?
Yes.
Yes. Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pete says yes. Martha, thank you very much.
Thank you, Martha.
And now I'll go to the Board of Selectmen. Jeff, can you do the 22nd, 6:00 PM sidewalk?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Jerry? Yes.
Wonderful. Okay. So we have the 22nd for our sidewalk. We have our continuation for the 27th. Martha, don't let me step on my toes here. I would, at this point, allow the select board to adjourn its meeting.
Well, they need, everybody needs to continue the public hearing, and then they can adjourn their meeting.
Well, we haven't done that, please. Alicia, I'm going to let you go first.
So I just have a question, one more question. So is there anything expected of the applicant before we meet again? There's that site plan he's supposed to give. Our, I'm just trying to get the action items in my head. He needs to provide the site plan, where our staff is going to review the stormwater calculations. We need to do a sidewalk, and then we meet. Is there anything else?
I think that covers it. We're moving forward, trying to get things buttoned up. The site plan should, you know, will include everything, I think, you know, will help the boards need to. On this, the sidewalk being kind of the vetting of that, that site plan.
Okay.
Alicia, just kind of realistic mechanics, and it might give us an idea of what we're doing. Before we've kind of bobbled and parked and rumbled up a dirt road, are we driving up the driveway, Scott?
It's paved.
Yes, oh, yeah.
I know that's paved now, but it hasn't been open. And Peter, we always were on the other side, and so are we going to be able to access the driveway, drive and park in the parking lot?
Absolutely. Come right on up.
I think that's imperative to a sidewalk.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else, Scott?
I have nothing else.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public.
Alicia, I'm sorry, we've got a person who's raised her hand, Pam Wool. She'll have to unmute herself.
Are we, are you adjourning, or are you going to talk about 105 High Street?
Now, this is just the selectmen. We're finishing this public hearing. The selectmen are adjourning their meeting, and then we're going on to the 105 public hearing.
Thank you.
Almost there, Pam.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so I. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the golf, Newbury Golf Center to July 27th at 7:00 PM.
I'll go ahead, Jeff.
Second it, Mike. Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy? Alicia Greco, yes. Now, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Wait. Planning board should continue.
Okay.
Thanks.
entertain a motion?
I move we continue the public hearing of this matter until July 27th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Rule call vote, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
George, yes. Thank you. And? Go ahead, Alicia.
Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn, and I'd also like to thank Julie for getting us a lot of documents in a timely fashion.
Second that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy? Alicia Greco, yes. Thank you, everyone, and.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Alicia.
Continue. Carry on.
Good meeting.
Thank you, select board members.
See you later.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Yeah.
All right, so continuing with the planning board. We have a second public hearing, which is an open space residential development, OSRD, special permit applicant 105 High Road. Map 48 lot 49, owner Arthur and Sandra Costanos with the applicants of DePiero LLC now.
I've got the public hearing notice. Do you want me to share that?
Please, thank you.
Okay. Let me hold on a sec. I just need to
Sure.
find it here. Sorry. I thought I had it up on my.
Okay, I think I.
Do you want me to read it?
Actually, I have it up. Let me screen share. Leslie, it's over you.
Oh, thank you for enlarging. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, July 15th, 2020, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Massachusetts, in the second floor hearing room to be held virtually via Zoom to consider an application submitted by DePiero LLC for an open space residential development, OSRD, special permit for proposed OSRD at 105 High Road, Newbury, Mass., Assessors Map, R48 lot 49. Property owner Arthur and Sandra Costanos. The applicant requests approval of a proposed OSRD plan for 11 lots to include 10 new single-family dwellings, and one existing dwelling has shown, excuse me, on the 105 High Road, Newbury, Mass., OSRD Special Permit Plan. In accompanying drawings dated April 15th, 2020, prepared by DePiero Properties LLC by Designs Consultants and as described in the OSRD Special Permit Application and Supporting Documents. The application is on file with the town clerk and in the planning office, Suite 101, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. A digital or a hard copy may be requested by emailing planningboard@townofnewbury.org. The plans and website. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development should appear at the designated time and place. Interested persons may participate in the meeting from the computer tablet or smartphone at Or by telephone by calling 1-929-205-6099 US and using meeting ID number Or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel 9 or at www.tnctv.org. Peter Pecos, Chair of Newbury Planning Board.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay. I would entertain a motion to open this hearing. Second?
Second.
All righty. Any discussion, rule call, I guess, to open. Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes, I'm still here.
Wonderful. I think that, thank you, Woody. And Mary, how are you feeling?
Yes.
Great. And I'm in favor as well. Okay. Martha, should we hear from our applicant first?
That's typically what we do.
And who would that be?
I'm not sure. David, Jen?
Giann Grande.
Wait, and I'm looking for you here. How are you identified?
David.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Okay, so you need me to make you the co-host?
Please.
All right, you should be all set.
All right, I'll try to bring up my image here.
Thank you for your patience in getting to this hearing, by the way.
Good evening. I'm David Giann Grande. I'm a principal at Design Consultants, and I'm registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Tonight, I'm sort of pinch hitting for Steve Sawyer, who is away rafting in Oregon. And he's out in the wild, so he has no internet connection. So he's the project manager and the engineer of record, but I think I have a pretty good handle on it. So I'll run through the processes. As was mentioned in the legal notice, what we're looking for is an open space residential development and OSRD. I have with me tonight author Konstantinos, Mark DePiero, who's the developer. I have Mark Griffin, who's the attorney. Bill Buckley is on the line, who is a development consultant. And Tom Minor, who is the landscape architect. And then obviously Steve and myself make up the design team. So with that said, this rendering in front of you right now is the existing house. And what it illustrates, first of all, I wanted to give you an idea or a benchmark or a landmark of where this is along High Street. You might recognize the building. And it's just, it's just north of Hay Street. If you notice in this particular slide, we have expanded the driveway. And when we go through this whole process, we'll come back to this slide, and you'll notice that this driveway that's shown here is actually the proposed roadway. So the first thing we needed to do was look at the existing conditions and generate a yield plan. The site itself is 16.31 acres. It slopes generally from High Street, which is on the bottom left here, all the way back to the east or northeast. Sort of a gentle slope at 4% or 5%. Most of the mature vegetation is located in the rare part of the site back in this general area to the northeast. The rest is pretty much open field, not a lot of mature trees, just some small six-inch diameter, six-inch caliber trees. The soils throughout the site are excellent. They're two minutes of an inch, which is well-drained soil, so it's excellent for septic systems and/or implementing drainage. There is municipal water out on High Street to the southwest. What this illustrates here is a duplex plan. And what I'm going to try to do is zoom in a little bit. So what this is, is this is five lots of, five duplex lots totaling 10 dwelling units. All of the units are in excess of 60,000 square feet, and they have more than 75% dry over, I think the one of the lowest ones is 48,000 square feet. So they meet that requirement. Each lot has appropriate frontage that is maintained through the front yard setback. And 90% of the front yard setback. Each lot, there was supposed to be a new provision that, a new article in the zoning bylaw that would require a 40 feet where through the, from the lot frontage to the the sighting of the dwelling. So we tried to maintain that here. We have 40 feet through to where the buildings are sighted. Each lot shows an area for soil absorption systems. You can see that there are these rectangles for each of the, for each of the lots. As I had mentioned earlier, that the soils are excellent. The roadway is 495 feet, which is less than required 500 feet. The roadway width is 22 feet of pavement, and it's a 53-foot right-of-way. The cul-de-sac diameter, the land, the right-of-way is 165 feet, and the turnaround is 140 feet. And we would propose to use the municipal water that is out in High Street for each of these lots. As I had mentioned, we'd be from High Street down to the cul-de-sac. It'd be a general, a gentle 4% slope. On the downside on this, if we were to implement a a yield plan like this, we would have to remove the two structures. There is the structure, the two structures that I showed in the prior slide. There's the house here, and then there's a carriage house, an old bond converted to a carriage house right in this general area. The OSRD. This represents an illustration of the OSRD. It's 10 lots plus the original house. We have 71% open space, 60.8% upland. And obviously, if you so we have some 21% over the 50% requirement. The barn and the carriage house, the carriage house would just be moved back approximately 100 feet so that it would still give the same view corridor, but it would now be 100 feet further back and allow and allow us to use that as one of the units. And then the existing house would remain in place. Before we really got into any kind of civil design, we sort of went through the four-step process. That was done by Tom Minor, who was with Hock Design. The process, as you all know, was to go through and evaluate all of the natural resources, which he did. He looked at things like meadows and woods and stone walls and trees and view corridors and a trail network, et cetera. Then he came in, he placed his dwelling units, and then we put, we started putting the road and the trail network around that. And then eventually we came out to put some lot lines together. Now, what this OSRD represents is a 900-foot length of cul-de-sac. It's obviously a large cul-de-sac and roomy. The lots are very square and nice, nice squares or rectangles that are highly usable. All of the space and lays out well. We have at the end of the cul-de-sac a large upland area. Now, that would be used for our, also combined use. It would be used for our septic systems. It would be a community-type septic system in that area. But it would also be just sort of a nice meadowed area, very, very much characteristic of of Newbury. The lots, they're smaller lots. We're trying to do, obviously, really respect and make sure that we're creating a design that takes seriously considers the bylaw. So the lots range from 11,000 to 1,500 square feet. So that's roughly a quarter acre to a third of an acre, right? Frontage ranges from 92 feet to, you have a long gated frontage on lots 1 and 11 that are 300-plus feet. Side yards. All the side yards, we've tried to maintain 10 feet. There is one exception, the existing dwelling unit, the garage right to this property line in that corner is just around 5 feet, a little bit less than 5 feet. And all the rear yards are 20-foot minimum. As I mentioned, the roadway is 920 feet long, really reasonable grade to it, 4% to 5%. We've created three parking spaces at the end of the cul-de-sac. It isn't shown here, but it actually is shown on this next slide. You can see what we've done is we've put some public parking spaces there to leverage the future trails in open space. Drainage, drainage design will be low-impact development techniques, swales, individual infiltration units on the on the individual lots. And what we're thinking about is rain gardens as well on individual lots. Trail network. So we wanted to talk a little bit about the trail network. As you can see, this is the historic New England trails that abut this property. Our property would facilitate a leveraging those existing trails, connecting into them, providing greater access, a second means of egress. And and those trails would run right through this general area. In addition, as I had mentioned, this is the soil absorption system, but we'll also have a large upland meadow in this area, a meadow that's actually about 2 acres in size, so it's significant. The profile, as you run through the open space from the development area, this part of the development area is a little bit less than 5 acres. Then we got about a 2-acre upland in here. Then it is a small wetlands, and then a very large upland here, and then a small wetlands back in this general area. So based on the OSRD we have before you, let me zoom in on that a little bit as well, so you can see that a little bit better. Based on this OSRD, we are looking for relief. We're looking for relief to have a 40-foot right-of-way. So that's the, not the. So that's the, the, not the actual paved road, but the, the deeded roadway. We're looking for, instead of a 200-foot centerline radius, these radiuses in the middle of the road. They typically are 200-foot centerline radiuses. We'd like to go to 150-foot centerline radius. And the maximum length of the cul-de-sac, obviously, is, is over the 500 feet, 920 feet to the end of the cul-de-sac here. And the last request for relief would be for sidewalks with the open LID-type drainage we'd like to use. It's, it's not conducive to, to having sidewalks. So we're asking for relief on, on having sidewalks. I think what we're trying to achieve here, also with the tighter curves and the, and the gentle slopes, is sort of a more rural driveway vibe to it so that, that the traffic is slow with the reverse curvatures and, and, and the roadway is highly usable. I would say that the design team has been out and active with the department heads. I think the team has been with the Board of Health. We have done septic and deep hole tests, perk tests. We've been, had discussions with conservation, historical and building departments, the highway department. We've been in touch with the town engineer, not through Bill, but through the, through a peer review. And we've also reached out to the fire, police and, and tree warden. So one, the only thing, really only permits we haven't at least conceptually investigated at this stage would be the mass DOT curb cut permit. And traditionally, you, you have to have a subdivision before you apply for that permit. So we have to get through this process before we start that process. I know that was brief, but I've got a whole design team here, including the landscape architect, the, the attorney, the development consultant, the owner and the developer. So we're available for any questions you might have.
Dave, does anybody else from your team want to speak, present?
Yeah, if, I don't know if Bill Buckley or Mark DePiero or Tom Minor would like to speak. Gentlemen, can you raise your hand if you would like to speak or, or let Martha know or let me know? Martha, could you?
Would you like to unmute?
Who would you like to unmute?
That would be, I can't see them, but it would, it'd be Tom Minor, Bill Buckley, Mark Griffin, Mark DePiero and, and Arthur Costantino, Costininas.
Tom Minor, Mark Griffin are both unmuted.
I have Mark.
Bill Buckley is muted, so he may need to unmute himself. No, I can unmute him. I think it's, it's a little, it's a little glitchy with the screen share.
So I just, I just want to make the point that my screen is not showing the ability to raise a hand.
If you go down to participants, you should be able to raise a hand.
I know, but I can't.
Okay, so if we stop screen sharing, we can do that. Well, if you have your, your, your screen up, is there someone who would like to comment on what is proposed?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a comment if that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Who's speaking?
It's Mark Griffin.
Okay.
So I just want to briefly go through the list of legal documents that were, you know, was submitted to the board and talk about a couple of the ones that I think are most pertinent to the OSRD. And so the second one on the list that I submitted is a conservation restriction or a deed to the town of Newbury in the event the town of Newbury does not desire to own the open space, which we don't believe it will. The conservation restriction will restrict the land to be kept as open space and accessible to the public in the event open space is either deeded to a nonprofit or a homeowner's trust. Right now, as I believe the planning office is aware, we have been reaching out to the, what do they call themselves now? I'm losing the train. There you go, Historic New England. I used to know them as Spinaya. So yes, it's Historic New England. They have property at Spencer Pierce Little Farm, which abuts this. And as you can see from the trail plan, that was in the Mr. Giangrande's presentation, it would be a good connection. And so, you know, if things work out with them, then our idea would be to deed the open space to that nonprofit and connect that trail to their trail. So it would have access to Spencer Pierce Little Farm and walk through that property. So the other is an easement for use of the open space to the town of Newbury. And that is something that was shown on the OSRD plan, the 11-unit OSRD plan. It would run along the side and up to where the three parking spaces are and then through into the open space. And in fact, if there's a connection, then the, the connection to Historic New England would, you know, allow that trail to continue. So members of the public would be able to, you know, walk up the side or drive in. They can drive in and where the cul-de-sac ends, there's again those three parking spaces where they can park and then walk through the open space and hopefully up through the trail through the open space into Historic New England property. So that would be the easement for the public. Obviously, there would be a covenant and restriction on the open space that it would have to remain that way. In fact, if it turns out Historic New England won't take this, then the idea would be that this would be open space that would be owned by a homeowner's trust and managed by a homeowner's trust and a declaration of covenants and restrictions would be put on it. That would serve the same purpose as restricting the property in perpetuity and also providing that easement to the town so that they could pass and repass into it and over the OSRD portion of the plan. Happy to answer any questions on, on any of that. But that concludes my episode.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else from your group that would like to present?
Tom Minor.
Hello, Tom.
Let me turn my screen on so you can do a face-to-face here. Landscape architect with Hock Design licensed in Massachusetts. Hopefully there you, can you see me now? There I am, in all my glory. Just wanted to briefly add to our original discussion about the, the design coming in. It was, it was really important to keep our rural character of the town with this community. So we wanted to make sure we had a, a kind of a serpentine entry. And it was very important not to have cookie cutter, cutter homes. We wanted to make sure we had different views of the houses as we came in with, with some side entering garages, front entering garages, different shaped buildings, roof lines. As far as the landscaping goes, we got a tree-lined street. Save, obviously save as many trees as we can on the, on the perimeter. And as we get into the design, this is just a conceptual landscape plan, obviously. As we get into the design, well, the darker circles shown on the plan, those would be evergreen trees to, to, to screen certain views and to give some privacy from the neighbors as well as from, to residents, side to side. As we go up further, you can see the, the bigger shaded neighboring. I believe that's a, a barn structure. We'd be, where we, we'd be screening that with some more upright evergreen trees that are narrower where the, the space is, is tight. As we get into foundation plantings, we'd be using more natural drought tolerant shrubs, evergreen deciduous varying heights, appropriate for the site and appropriate for the character of the neighborhood and the homes. If we needed some additional fencing, we were showing fencing along High Road to kind of pick up some of the, the farm character. If we needed some, some privacy fencing along the property lines for the neighbors, we'd, we'd intermix that with some, some evergreen screening to, you know, appease, appease neighbors and to give some privacy where we need it. As I said, it would be neighboring, more natural shrubs and, and trees. I'd like to keep more natives like river birch and, and maples and oaks. For ornamental trees, we'd, we'd probably stick with some dogwoods and flowering crabs and cherries and, and dents trees and on long property lines. But the majority of the, the street trees and common area trees would be, would be native varieties suitable for this site. I believe that's about all I wanted to, to add to the, to discussion at this moment.
I'm assuming any trails that we would do would be, and maybe Tom, maybe you can speak to this, but any, any trails we've done, because they'd be in, in sort of a forested area would just be wood chip or, or more of a natural trail. Nothing would be paved or, or, you know, invasive to, to resource areas. So it would be natural trails, probably just.
That's what we'd like to do.
Hand-select where the trail should be and, and figure out how they would work with the, with the, you know, the terrain. We, we do have to cross foot to, to make the, the trail contiguous. We do have to cross a small wetlands, which we'd probably do some sort of wooden boardwalk. So we'll work that out with the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
I think that concludes what we wanted to say. I, I think everybody in the design team has spoken. So we'd be ready for any questions you have for us.
Great. So what I'm going to do is I'm probably going to have you drop down your screen sharing for a moment. Just like getting our board back here. Keep in mind, we might be bringing that screen back up when questions pop up. All right, so thank you for the presentation. We, we do appreciate that. So I'm going to now open it up to the planning board members for any questions or comments. I'm just going to kind of run down our, our list here. Larry, do you have any questions at this time?
A few, yeah. As to the yield plan, would that require any waivers from the subdivision rules and regs?
No, not, not that I'm aware of. I'm pinch hitting for Steve, but I looked through everything today. It's, it's by right.
And do I understand that you have perked the, the lots of the yield plan to show that they could support those lots?
Yeah, we have excellent soils, everything we perked and all. And each, each location has at least one perk test in it and, and one deep hole. And it's excellent material, well-drained, less, you know, two minutes an inch type soils.
And as to the OSRD plan, in addition to the waivers that you've mentioned, would you also, not also need a waiver for the contiguous uplands requirement?
It's, I, I think it's a discussion item and maybe Mark can, can answer that better. Our interpretation is that we can cross that with a, with a bridge structure, an ancillary structure. So that's, Mark, if you want to respond on that.
So there's no actual statement in the bylaw that requires contiguous upland. There's a requirement for contiguous open space, which we have shown on the plan that we do have.
It, it seems to me, last time, Mark, we went around with this, there, there was a disagreement on that point. Not as, you know, I'll just make note of that. I think we, we have an opinion of council that may be different from your interpretation.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, we, we do have that, that disagreement. And we're happy to hear the board out on that. But, you know, we, we continue to believe that there's no requirement because it's not stated in the bylaw. Additionally, you know, wetlands are definitely part of the purpose of the OSRD. Protecting wetlands is specifically listed as one of the primary purposes in section 1297-5. So, you know, it's presumed that you're going to have wetlands in your open space. It's not stated that there's contiguous upland required in your open space. So wetlands are supposed to be preserved in the open space and contiguous upland is not mentioned. We believe the reasonable interpretation is that merely the open space itself needs to be contiguous, which it is. And you can see that we actually have devoted, I think, 71% of the site to open space. So a significant amount. In addition, you know, if you were to say, okay, you need contiguous upland to equal 50%, which is 50% is the open space requirement. I believe we, we have that. So I think if we go and look at out of that 71% of open space area, if you look at Steve Sawyer's narrative that he submitted with the project, out of that 71% of total open space, 60.8% of it is upland area. So that's a significant amount of upland in that open space. And, you know, I, I think that ought to be considered when you're determining whether our open space meets that criteria.
All right, fine. And I'm sure we'll have further discussions on all this. As far as the, the trails that you're proposing to establish, would that just be through this open space? Are you going to try to do something on Historic New England's property as well?
We did not have a plan to establish the trail on Historic New England. That's, that's their property. What we did have, I guess, discussions, which I was not part of. So if, you know, Mark or Arthur want to chime in on this, that's fine. I was not part of that, but I understand that there was no discussion about us building trails on their property. That would be something for them.
And lastly, I mean, and I'm sure as we go forward, we'll have plenty of other things to talk about. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Mark, but I, I don't know. I, I just saw something very recently, a suggestion that there's, that the property is burdened on the northern border by a seven-foot right-of-way in favor of the abutting property. And that, have you, are you aware of that? And have you considered how that might affect to this project going forward?
There's an easement on the, on the boundary, along the boundary line with the O'Brien property. But, you know, it's an easement that as long as we don't block it, we would not be violating the terms of that easement. And the plan is set up so that we will not be blocking it.
That's all I have for now, Pete.
Thank you, Larry. George had to step out, so Leslie, I'm going to move to you. Do you have any questions at this moment?
No, I don't have any questions. I just, yes, I do. Can you hear me?
We can, but your video has gone, but I understand that because of your signal.
Yep, as soon as we went into screen share, it, it cut out on me. No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Leslie. Woody, do you have any questions at this time?
No, not at this time, Peter.
Okay, great. Mary, do you have any questions at this time?
I don't.
Okay, great. So I just had a quick question. It was kind of a follow-up to the trail question. So has there been discussion with connecting to that historic? So has there been discussion with connecting to that historic trail or is that discussion not taking place? Because it was indicated on the, on the, on the.
It's my understanding that it was. I wasn't party to that. Is is anybody on the call that was party to that, Mark or or?
Arthur Costonas owner property. Can anybody hear me? Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Uh, I could speak to that issue. I've been in continuing conversations with Historic New England. Um, and the the simple answer is there is no commitment at this moment. But we have been, we continue to dialogue about, I continue to dialogue with Historic New England, um, a specific person uh to that point of connectivity and possible trail connections and the the use of both of the properties to a common goal, public. Um, so the simple answer is there's no commitment at this moment, but I continue to dialogue as recently as yesterday.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any other questions at this time. Martha, do we have some peer review comments? We should enter into this.
Um, well, we've received peer review comments, which
We also have public as well.
And we do have public comments. I actually can, I hope, screen share that list if you'd like me to. Or we could ask the people who are actually in attendance if they would like to speak.
Sure. So what I'll do is I'll just make a comment. We have, we've received a number of comments and we have created a matrix so that we can keep track of those and those will be available for review. Uh, so rather than we reach, read each comment, as you can imagine, we'll take a bit of time to do that. Um, we have those recorded and if there are any individuals that would like to make comments, uh, we can use our raise our hand function when we get to that component of our meeting.
I'm just addition on that. We should, um, we have the matrix. So we should at least read into the record everybody who has commented.
Please, could you pop that up?
Uh, I will do my best.
Okay, if not, I can.
Can you all see it?
Uh, not yet, but give us a second. There it is. Uh, do you want me to read these or do you want to read these?
Um, I'm happy to read them if you'd like.
Okay, it's probably larger than your screen.
Okay, yeah, it's it's full size on mine. So so I'm going to start down, uh, actually in the bottom left. From town boards and departments, we have received on June 25th, 20, a letter from the fire chief. On July 8th, 2020, a letter from James Saret, the DPW director. And on July 11th, 2020, a letter from Channing Howard, the Chair of the Historical Commission. Uh, then we've received two letters in support. One on July 14th, 20, from Christina Jones, resident of Rowley. And July 15th, Phil Dunn, who's an abutter at 109 High Road. There was a comment, um, not really for or against, but discussing affordable housing from a general comment from Dan Emerson on July 15th, uh, 22 Forest Street, resident of Newbury. And then in opposition, we have received on June 30th, 2020, a binder from Catherine O'Brien, which was previously provided to the board members in hard copy and has been resubmitted to them in digital format. On July 9th, from Stacy Barstelli, 5 Hay Street. July 10th, Stephen Roche, 25 Riverview Drive. July 10th, Colin Rose, 68 Northern Boulevard. July 10th, Christine A. Paddy, 5 Maple Terrace. July 10th, Leslie K. Dunleavy, 11 Stover Court, Amesbury. July 10th, Hugh and Alyssa Rice, 7R Austin Lane. July 10th, Noreen Salzo, 47 Hay Street. July 12th, Christopher and Catherine Ward, 17 Riverview Drive. July 13th, the Lakey family, 30 Riverview Drive. July 13th, John and Christine Wilkinson, 12 Pine Island Road. July 13th, Catherine O'Brien, 103 High Road. July 13th, Maleka King, no address given. July 13th, Eileen Walworth, 9 Green Tree Lane. July 14th, Eileen Cashman, 83 Scotland Road. July 14th, Ralph and Andrea Sargent, 23 Riverview Drive. July 14th, Monica Tobin, no address given. It was requested but not received. July 14th, Barbara F. Page, 143 High Road. July 14th, Jennifer Lee and Sarah Haas, 3B Black Duck Circle. July 14th, Fred Thurlo, 26 Marsh Ave. July 14th, Chris and Bonnie Simpson, 107 High Road, their abutters. July 14th, Christina Provost, 26 Riverview Drive. And July 15th, Sean and McGee, 67 Main Street. So I believe that captures it. All of these will be posted on the website.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, did you want to make a comment on peer review?
Uh, well, um, we have received one peer review letter from our peer reviewer, Joe Sawatka, which was provided to the applicant team. And so the presentation that you saw tonight is in response, has addressed comments that he's that he had submitted.
Great, great. Uh, thank you. Um, any comments from board members at this point before I open this up for public comment? Uh, Larry?
Nothing further this time.
Leslie?
No.
Okay, Woody?
No.
Uh, Mary? Okay, great. Um, do we have any comments from, any other comments from your perspective, Martha?
Uh, not at this time. I think that we will want to schedule a site walk and probably have more after that.
Okay, please don't let me forget that.
I'll try and, I'll try.
Okay, um, at this time, if there are folks in the audience that would like to make a comment, I'd ask that you please raise your hand. Uh, we'd use your raise your hand function by going down over your, onto your computer to participants and you can click on that and you can raise a hand and then we can address any questions or concerns that you might have.
And I think there are some people who are participating by phone, so they will have to use their keypad.
Okay. Let me see.
Which I think is the star six function, I believe.
And the other comment that I'll make is, folks, there will be plenty of opportunity, uh, not, uh, if it's not tonight, in future hearings to also make a public comment. So if there's something that hasn't come to a thought process or bubbly point, there will be future times to make those comments. So that's how this process will work.
Okay, one, one thing, I know Catherine O'Brien, actually, she doesn't have access to her computer. She had asked me to screen share some things for her.
Oh, please, please, thank you.
Here, and I need to ask her to unmute herself. So if, if so Catherine, if you can hear us, if you can, if you're using your phone, if you can press star.
Nine?
No. Or nine or star six. Hold on a sec.
Uh, stars, star nine.
Star nine. Okay, so she's raised her hand.
Okay, and star, okay, so that that's to, uh, raise your hand and star six is to unmute yourself. There you go.
All right, I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are. Hello.
Hello, hello. Well, thank you, Martha, for helping me so much this week. I think you're an absolute angel and a jewel to the planning board. Uh, she just goes above and beyond. So I want to say that right off the bat. Now, um, I do have a couple of comments to make based upon previous comments from the people that were presenting. Let's see. I think the first one that I would deal with is the, um, the open, quote unquote, open space area that's 68% or something, uh, high, high ground. First of all, as an abutter, I have horses. And for years, I would ride through that area. I don't do it anymore because it is thickly grown, overbrush, wetland. And it is occupied by greenheads, black flies, mosquitoes, anything that you could possibly imagine to bite you. And why would anyone want to go in there? It would be like, it'd be like putting someone in hell. It's terrible. I don't even let my horses go back there. They come back all bitten up. So it's just, you know, it's a lovely conceptual idea, but it's just not practical. You can't get back there and you can't walk around. I've tried it. It's been years. And, uh, and you're going to put a little bridge over the streams. Well, you know, no one's going to use it to begin with. The locals don't even go in there. So I think that you're very misguided in thinking that that would be something that would be a benefit and that would be part of the, uh, open space. I mean, it is required that there be, you know, 50% open space. And that's not, definitely not open. It's, it's, and I don't believe it qualifies for trees either, uh, forest. I mean, it's just, it's just, and it borders the marsh and it's in a flood plain, an AE flood plain. So, you know, I just feel that it's, if you want to, if you want to, you know, promote that, uh, I think there are a lot of people that would, um, have some difficulty with that. The abutters and the local folks that don't walk in there anymore because it's just, it's horrible. So, uh, you know, you're protecting the forest land by leaving it empty. That's the best thing that you can do. To encourage people to go in there would would just, no one would. It's just, it's a fantasy. So let's get back to the fact that it says that, um, on, on the, um, open space residential development, it states that 50% of upland will be protected and allowed. And that's part of the OSRD. Well, only 6.8 acres are high and dry, are buildable. And if you build houses on the only upland, you're not going to have any upland. So I think that that there needs to be addressed. I just think that that's kind of silly to think that you're going to use wetlands as upland. So, uh, that was one comment on there that I had. Um, did anyone have anything they wanted to say back to me? Any, any concerns?
Uh, so probably Catherine, what I'll do is have you probably make all your comments. And then when you're all done, we would ask the applicants if they'd like to respond to any of those concerns.
Oh, sure. Okay, fine.
Because we try not to have a back and forth sort of thing.
Sure, not a problem. And again, the open space is for recreation and, and I don't see any area for recreation other than playing on the septic field. Um, so that's another thing. So the, the open space, uh, the proposed buildings in the open space are to be related to their surroundings. Well, they aren't. There are no OSRDs. And the surroundings are all farmlands and single-family homes stretched down High Road. So there, it doesn't relate to any buildings that are in the surroundings. Um, now, I guess I could get to the question about the easement before I go back to landscaping and so forth. By the way, your design is very pretty. Um, so I noticed that, um, yeah, that would be 12A is 50% open space is upland. So I did notice on your displays this evening that, um, and I noticed on your engineering design that I have in front of me that you don't have any monuments or rods or anything on the corners of the house, the lot. You don't have anything that says this is where the lot line starts and this is where it ends. Other than you're, you know, you want to tell me about it. But if you look at the deed, there are very clearly, um, designations all around this property with rods, with sticks and stones in the olden days, with nails in the ground. And so there's really no reason why there aren't any designations on here. I find it odd that, um, that wouldn't be on there. Um, I guess the other thing I can say is that years ago, I had my side of the property surveyed by a licensed engineer. And at that time, he put, um, a rod in the ground, sub, uh, right in the corner between my land and Costonas' land. And, um, your plans call for the stockade fence to be the lot line. I can tell you with authority, since I put the fence up, the stockade fence is not on the lot line. The reason I had my land surveyed was so that I would know that I could put the fence further on my property without intruding upon the neighbor. So it's between six inches and a foot in places that it's, it's, uh, it's not, your, your plan has it right on the, um, stockade fence and that is not the lot line, number one. Um, number two, uh, you've used the easement, the seven-foot easement that is designated to me. And I'll read to you the legal brief on that in just a second. Um, so that piece of it is not able to be done either. You can't use my easement. I'll just give you a brief overview of a legal brief on this. Um, I've reviewed the agreement and you have a copy of the agreement. Uh, or you should, it was in the binder. And it was recorded, the Essex House Registry of Deeds between myself and the former owner of 105 High Road. And in that easement, he gave me, I'm going to move down here, the agreement states that the Stanhope, that's the former owner, the owners of 105 High Road, at the time, irrevocably and unconditionally waives and relinquishes any rights or other interests appurtenant or claimed to be appurtenant to the O'Brien property or and the Stanhope's property at 105 High Road in Newbury burdening or allegedly burdening the successors and, and assigns with the land. In my opinion, this means that the present owner or any future owner of use of the easement defined in paragraph one uh cannot, you cannot use it. You can't even use it to put a tree on. It has to remain open and available to me at all times. And it cannot be used as a road frontage. So that's something that is interesting. So I certainly could go on, but those are the two items that I heard mentioned. So I thought that I would, uh, comment on those. I can also tell you about the trail system that you're working with the New England Historic Commission. That, those trails are, they're not open to the public. They're owned by people. I own the one that about the trail you're trying to connect. No one's going across there. Then you get the people on River View. And then you have Matt Kazakis who owns Tender Crop, and he doesn't want people in there either. Walking all over his groceries. So I think that that's a little bit of a far-fetched possibility as well. So, um, I guess with lot 11, the existing dwelling, uh, you do show on the rest of the lots where the septic system is going. But right now, the existing septic system would be under the road that you're proposing for the existing dwelling. Um, for the existing dwelling. So that probably wouldn't work either. There's no measurement between the edge or the end of this proposed road and the opening in my driveway, how far away it is. And like I say, there are no designations as to where anything is. And I know for a fact, my engineer, I stood there and watched him put it in. I also had another engineer come by from Haverhill, I think, or Lawrence. I wasn't familiar with them. And I was getting my mail and I saw them put the nail in his driveway considerably away from the stockade fence. And then he put a little orange circle around it to designate it. And the reason you can't see it today is because shortly thereafter, the Costas went out with black spray paint and sprayed it. So that's why that may not have been discovered. But these are things that I think should be looked at before any kind of subdivision is even discussed. If you can't get that road in there, then that doesn't make the subdivision very plausible. So I think the other thing that I would say is that you're asking for special permits for a subdivision that will put me out of business. I am an agricultural, I'm right next door. I own 20 acres of land and I have a very large horse farm. Agricultural pursuits are very highly sought in this area and they're protected. To close me down from my horse business, which it will, will put me out of business, which is not keeping in, you know, it's just not, it's not in keeping with the bylaws of Newberry, which promotes agriculture and defends agriculture. But it also is promoted in the Massachusetts Constitution and Mass General laws. So you've got, you know, you have a lot on your plate here because if you put me out of business, someone is going to have to pay for that. That's my source of income. So I would just ask you to think about those things. I'll let you know right now that you'll be in direct violation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3, Chapter 90, Section 9, Chapter 113, Section 125A, Chapter 128, Section 1A. So you're in violation of the Mass General laws by attempting to close down an agricultural business which is promoted and protected in this community. It's in the bylaws. And it's something that we're trying to encourage, not get rid of. So this goes in the exact opposite direction of what the people in Newberry want. They don't want, they moved here for the farms and so forth. That just brings me to a funny thing. If you think that that little tiny piece of septic area is going to be a meadow, my ton acre hayfield is behind that. And the only person that's going to get a chance to take advantage of that view is the last house on the road because everybody else is just going to see roofs. So I guess I could talk about the traffic pattern. Right now, I have 40 polo ponies at my house and they go out on rigs to bring the horses to the polo matches several times a day. They are longer than a tractor trailer. The one that I just saw come in a few minutes ago with his lights on holds 16 horses. And it is in my driveway, all the way in my driveway, with the nose pulling out onto High Road. Think it out. It doesn't stop quickly. A dry weight on it is 30,000 pounds. If someone got hit with that as a thrust, it would definitely kill them. I also have regular horse trailers going out that are smaller than that. But it's still, it's still quite a thing to drive a tractor trailer, a polo pony rig and a trailer rig with the traffic that we see out in front. Now, living right across the street from you, I can tell you, there's been tremendous number of accidents out there with people going in and trying to get in and get out of Tender Crop and get out of Hay Street and get out of Riverview and get out of the driveways. Bonnie Simpson will tell you. Sometimes she can't get out of her driveway. And that's without this additional road. So, you know, it's within the planning board's purview to deny this special permit because there is nothing special about this. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any specific components that the applicant would like to address with this or not?
May I speak to one aspect of that, please?
Sure, Mark, go ahead.
I'd just like to, well, there's a lot to unpack, but I'm really just going to focus on one issue and that was the easement that she mentioned. She's right that there's an agreement and it's recorded. But if you read that agreement, it doesn't say anything about exclusivity. So it's not an exclusive easement. She has the right to use that seven feet. We have the right to use that seven feet as long as we don't block her right to use that seven feet.
But you will be. You will be.
Catherine, what I don't want to do is I don't want to do back and forth, so.
Sure, sure.
So what I'm going to do is.
You can try to have a opinion. Sure.
So I'm just going to have the applicant respond to the things that you brought up and then we'll see if anyone else has any comments.
That's the only issue I want to address.
Okay, thank you very much. And Catherine, thank you very much and we appreciate you participating with the difficulty of not having the technology in the best manner for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha got me here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
David, go ahead.
Yeah, I think one thing I did want to address was that the wetlands were actually mapped by Tom Hughes, local environmental planner. So the areas that we are saying are uplands were mapped by Tom Hughes. We're sure that they are uplands. Relative to the, you know, level of the plans, this is a process. And I would say that is part of the process where we'll continue to work on our plans. And for instance, she was talking about some monumentation that isn't shown on the original survey. Well, we'll be adding that to our plans at the next level.
Thank you. Thank you. Fred, I saw a hand go up and I'm not sure if you, yes, okay. Martha, Fred has his hand up. Let's see if I can capture him so he can speak. So Fred, I'm going to unmute you.
He may need to unmute himself.
Yes, you will need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We got you, Fred.
All right. I want you to compare the.
Fred, identify yourself and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fred Thurlow, 26 Marsh Avenue. I've submitted written comments. But I would like at this point for you to compare the proof plan with his proposed OSRD plan. And you'll notice that the street is twice as long on the OSRD plan as the proof plan. And there is much more of the lot covered with structures and disturbance with the new plan, with the OSRD plan than there is with the proof plan. And under the special permit, the purpose and intent of the special permit, item three, the OSRD is supposed to encourage a less sprawling and more efficient form of development that consumes less land, less open land and can foster resistant topography. And under four, it's supposed to minimize the total amount of disturbance on the site. This OSRD plan actually disturbs the site more. And in my opinion, it does not qualify and you should deny this. That's it.
Thank you, Fred. I don't know if there's going to be any comment to address that or if we're just going to have that as information. I don't see anyone responding to that. Is there anyone else at this point that would like to enter with a public comment? Pam Wool, I'm going to unmute you. And if you could unmute yourself, please. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Pam Wool. I live at 16 Withington Street in Newbury. And I'm not speaking in support or against the plan per se because I actually don't know that much about the different concerns. I am always sad to lose open land and I do enjoy the rural character of our town. But what I want to address is what type of housing we need in Newbury. And if there's going to be a plan approved for development, I think it's imperative that we work as hard as we can to assure that that plan includes some affordable housing. I don't know what the cost of these houses would be, but I have a hard to imagining they are going to be in the range of affordable housing and we don't need more higher-end housing in Newbury. We have a housing crisis in Massachusetts. We have a housing problem in Newbury. There's a housing plan in Newbury that talks about that. I'm not sure what the official status or endorsement of that plan is, but I think we all know that people who work in this community have a hard time affording, afford living here. Children of most people in this community are not able, for the most part, to continue to live here because of the upward, you know, driving of real estate prices and housing, seniors, et cetera. So I would like to see, I don't know the exact workings of these open space residential development permits, but I know that there is some leveraging around affordable housing personally. I would much rather see a cluster of very small houses or even a little chain of attached townhouses, tightly clustered with more open space, a lot cheaper or nothing at all.
Thank you, Pam. The planning board is sensitive to your comments.
And what about Deprero, et cetera? The developers.
I don't know if they want to comment on that. I don't see any opportunity for it. Thank you.
I just want to say that at a certain point, there's a bit of a moral issue here. How much money needs to be made?
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? All right. I don't see any other requests for comments. Are there any other questions or comments from board members at this time? I'm just going to do a quick survey. Larry?
Do we still have Catherine with us?
Catherine is here. I don't know if she can respond to us. She'd have to toggle back in. But I could ask her to.
You know what, Pete, let me withdraw that. Maybe it's getting late. Maybe it's better saved for another time.
Okay, all right. Woody, do you have any comments or questions?
No, not at this time, Peter.
All right, Leslie? I think you have muted us.
Unmute yourself.
Okay.
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Mary?
I'm fine, no problem.
Woody, I got you, right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, I don't have anything at this time. Martha, did you have anything?
Not at this time.
All right, I think I have two little boxes I see here. One is probably a sidewalk and the second would be a continuance date. Do you have any suggestions or recommendations for either? Or a sidewalk?
Just looking at the calendar here. But again, I suppose we might tie it into, you know, potential date for a continuance. I quite honestly prefer not to add another to next week. But if that's the only time that works, we can do that.
So would you be suggesting a sidewalk on the?
Well, it really depends on what works for the board members.
So that would be two in one day? Is that what your thought is?
Probably not. I mean, if we're doing 6:00.
6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M. I don't think we'd, we certainly wouldn't want to do later than that. And scheduling could be dicey trying to do them back to back.
Let me just go back for a sec. Are you thinking of a continuance date? Maybe that will help us back into a sidewalk date.
Well, again, that sort of depends on the board. But again, the fifth, we have three public hearings already scheduled.
Well, that brings us out to the 19th.
So, yeah, so that would take us to the 19th if we were going to stick with the regular hearing schedule or meeting schedule. And I think Larry has a conflict that night, if I believe.
I'm going to be away that week on vacation. That said, as long as I get internet access to Zoom, I can participate.
Okay.
For the 19th.
Yeah, I'm going to be up in Lincoln, New Hampshire. I don't know how the service is up there, but I'm guessing it's probably pretty good.
Well, we're all going to come up and find out at the same time.
It'll be fine. We can have it at.
There we go. And, you know, worst case, you can mull in if you need to.
I'm sorry?
You can mull in if you need to.
Yes, yeah.
So if we were to look at the 19th, then how about a sidewalk sometime in the week of the 10th, the 10th to the 14th? Are there any conflicts for any of the planning board members? I don't see any.
I don't see any.
The only days I'm unavailable are Tuesdays.
Would we want to consider Wednesday, the 12th?
It's good for me.
It's good for me.
All right. Okay, Mary?
Yeah, it's fine for me as long as it isn't too late at night.
Yes, because of those things that can carry us away because it is going to be wet there. So I might suggest not 2:00. You have to. What do we think about when the sun's still out? Is the sun still shining there at 4:00?
Yeah.
I don't know. I might.
There are rhetorical questions.
What about in the morning, like 10:00?
Oh, I'm liking that even better. At 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, the 12th.
Sounds good to me, Peter.
Good.
All right, Larry.
That works, yep.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yeah.
Mary? All right, and I think that works on my end. And Martha, you're not going to be on vacation that week?
No, I'm not.
All right, so we have a sidewalk. And for a continuation date.
We should check to make sure that works with the applicant.
Ah, thank you, applicant. Who would like to speak on the part of the applicant? We have four participants.
I think Arthur's trying to unmute himself.
Yeah, I think it should be the property owner.
I'm here. I have a question, if you don't mind, board. Is there any problem getting on that meeting on the 5th of August? Time is very important to us.
Yes, we have three public hearings and as you can see, we've struggled through two and it's 10:15 at night. To have four, I think, would be a undue burden on the board, especially if we're going to involve in a detailed discussion. To have four, I think would be a do burn on the board, especially if we're involved in a detailed discussion. I just have to be realistic about people managing time.
Right.
Just try to work with everybody's schedules.
Got it.
And as it is, I think the planning board meets twice a month without any sidewalks included.
Right. So there's no problem with the proposed schedule? From this.
And we're sensitive to, we're sensitive to time as well.
I see two hands raised.
Okay. So do we want to?
Did that answer your question? There's no problem.
Yes, it did. Thank, yes, thank you very much, Arthur. Okay, I'm going to go back to Kelly and Russ. And I'm going to unmute. You might need to unmute yourselves as well.
How you doing? That coming through?
Yes, you are. Please identify yourself and your address. Thanks.
He's muted again. Russ, can you unmute yourself again, please?
Sorry about that. It might be the connection. Russ in Kedley Lakey, 30 Riverview Drive. The, the, one of the concerns we had is just on Cottage Road, there's obviously that, that development that just took one of the most historic properties in Newbury and pretty much clear cut that for seven houses. Do we really need yet another one of those getting stuck into a rural, rural area and ruining the view for everyone on Riverview Drive? Just, I don't know, feedback on that or thoughts on that?
No, no, I can understand your, your comment. And I didn't know if you wanted to ask the applicant a question or if you just wanted to state that position.
But I'd love to hear who's ever on the, the approval side of that to think, do we really need to continue to just take more farmland and continue to put more developments in there that don't really fit the landscape or just keeps destroying what historical Newbury is really stands for and that, that was a beautiful piece of property. And I know that the residents of Cottage Road are, obviously, they didn't have enough time to really fight back to kind of preserve that land.
So.
Statement, I guess, if there's no feedback on it, but just something to take into consideration when people live in Newbury and why we live here and to just keep seeing the land disappear is really sad.
I appreciate your comment very much and thank you.
Right, and the, the, Martha and I, we actually having a conversation about this earlier today. The role of a, of a planning board versus what its, its obligations are. Martha, do you want to kind of the summary of what we kind of talked about? Because I think it's pertinent, especially when this question is raised.
Well, I think, and I don't know whether, whether we might want to refer some of this to Brian, but you know, under, under.
I can, I can punt it there first if you'd like.
I see him sitting up there. But, you know, under, under mass general law with subdivisions, if it meets master and a law and subdivision rules and regs, subdivisions are allowed by rights. This is a special permit process, so that, you know, that, that has a level of discretion. But I don't know if Brian might want to sort of address this a little bit more.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please, Brian.
And I'm sure you can surmise, I could discuss this topic for an hour. I'll try to do it in two sentences. Ms. Taylor's comment is 100% accurate. As the subdivision control law, it's typically considered a non-discretionary review function of the planning board. To boil it down into an oversimplification, if an application complies, they get approval. That's the subdivision control law. Under a special permit process, it's, it's somewhat reversed. It's a discretionary special permit, even if an applicant meets all the criteria. We have ample case law that says a board can still deny it. That being said, it's still within the confines of the zoning act, chapter 40A, and the parameters of your zoning bylaw. I don't need to recite those for you, but they set forth exactly, you know, the scope of zoning for public health, safety and welfare and the zoning considerations are set forth in the act. So while the board still has a great deal of discretion in determining whether or not to grant a special permit, it still needs to be, its analysis needs to be within the confines of the criteria under your bylaw, the criteria under chapter 48, section nine, and the general scope and authority granted to a board sitting as a special permit granting authority.
Thank you.
If, if I could put in my two cents worth, Pete, to follow up with that, it's important for people to understand the distinction between subdivision control, as Brian and Martha have commented on in an open space, OSRD permit. The OSRD, and correct me, either one of you or anyone, if you feel I get this wrong, but it's favored under our bylaws because it's intended to preserve open space. And the function of this board is to determine whether an OSRD is a better use for this property than a conventional subdivision. But because it's a special permit, we have a lot of discretion, more than we would with a conventional subdivision. If we turn this down, it doesn't mean it goes away. It just means they could turn, could turn around tomorrow and apply for a conventional subdivision where we may, maybe don't have as much discretion as we would with a special permit. Hey, so it's important to keep that in mind.
Last night, sorry.
You going to say something, Woody?
Yeah, last night in that seminar. I'm not sure the initials of it, but I did this two hour seminar last night. They touched on basically some of the things that Martha and Larry just said. That's all.
And I am going to put the PowerPoint from that seminar up on the website for anybody who might be interested, because it does specifically address some of these questions.
That's great, Martha. Thank you.
You're welcome. Soon as it's posted, I'll get it on CPTC website.
I see another question from Stephen Roach. So I'm going to unmute you, Stephen, and then I'm going to have you unmute yourself. It, it looks like you're good. Okay, you're good, Stephen. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Peter, Chairman, thank you. Stephen Roach, 25 Riverview Drive. Thank you, Committee here for hosting this meeting and taking these considerations into point. And thank you, David, and your team for your thoughtful proposal. I just want to echo Russ and Kedley's thoughts on the impact that this will make to a very small neighborhood. And I'm hopeful that by the attendance in this call, you can demonstrate the impact that this would make. And understanding that a special permit is required, and I am not an expert by any means, but there's no reason to extend this and put more volume into a space that it's not designed for. So I'd like you to strongly consider the unit yield and make sure that this plan fits within the total character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. All right. Are there, I don't see any other comments. Okay. All right. So we need to solidify our continuance date.
Chair, excuse me? Chair?
Yes, Arthur.
I, I have Bill Buckley that would like to say something if that appropriate, Chair. Bill? Bill?
Yeah, sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, just wanted to, to take an opportunity. It's been, I'm looking at my notes here. It was back in January when we first made a presentation to you that I think had taken what were several attempts to, to identify a project here that, that I think, and I'm looking at my notes, that something that the town and the board could both be proud of, right? And I think that that's that, that's what has been tried to present, to present here with the OSRD tonight. I just want to echo Mr. Murphy's concerns is that on, on this project, it's, it's not a question really of if something is going to happen on the property. Right? The, the property is in private hands. It's privately owned and it is, it is eligible under zoning and subdivision control to be developed. And I, you know, I, I do think it's important to note that what, what we hope the board will be considering is, is what is the most appropriate development for the site. As was noted in the presentation, it is, there are 10 units allowed at, in, in five duplexes, which would result in the demolition of the existing home and the construction of a, of a new subdivision road. And, you know, we, we feel strongly that, and, and in that, in that scenario, all of the backland, so the full 16 acres would be would, would remain in private hands. There'd be no public benefit to, to any of the rear property that abuts the historic New England land, nor would there be public access to those points, right? So we, we're really hoping that the board recognizes that the OS, the opportunity to, to issue a special permit under the OSRD creates real opportunity for public benefit with those potential connections to historic New England. We think it's a, it's a, it's a layout as opposed to the, to the duplex, the, the 10 units in the duplexes. We think it's a, it's a layout that is more in character of, of the, of the single family housing that we think Newbury can be proud of. We think it's a, it's in a, it's in an area that has a, you know, pretty prominent shopping location across the street. It's, you know, it's, although it, it's clearly rural in nature, it's an active area of town. And we think an area that, 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 that people are going to want to live. So just wanted to, 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 to add to some of that discussion and, you know, we, we, we really respect the the, the abutters comments and role in this. And we remain, you know, committed to, to trying to resolve and work with, work with some of them, I guess. And then, you know, we, we also you know, look forward to additional comments from the board. So that's it. I'll be brief. It's, it's late. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Just saw our hands go up, so I see an iPhone, Jonathan's iPhone. So I'm going to unmute you. I would ask that you identify yourself and your address. Thanks.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, it's Jonathan Brown on 167 High Road. And I'm not a direct abutter, but I just wanted to, you know, I was kind of aware of this going on and just wanted to kind of state my position on, on the, these kind of developments. I guess my worry is that something like this will get in the hands of a developer that's going to do a 43B or some kind of bigger type complex during, you end up with housing that's, you know, it may, may look a lot worse than I think what's being proposed here. So my concern is, you know, instead of 11 or 10 houses or whatever this is, you end up with 40 houses. And to, to some people, I suppose that's a good thing. For me, I don't know that that's where, where Newbury wants to be either. So I guess I'm indifferent on this one. I think I'd, I'd rather go with a developer that's, you know, a local developer that has the respect around the area, who builds really nice quality homes, than have someone come in and do something that we're not going to be real proud of. So that's just my two cents on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I don't see any other hands and I would like to go for continuance date. So we were talking about the 19th of August. And how does that agenda look as of right now?
Right now, there's, there's nothing on it.
Beautiful.
You know, there, there's, there's pressure for other things, but right now it's not got any.
Okay. So we have a sidewalk planned. I would entertain a motion for continuation of this public hearing for the 19th of August at 7:15.
It would so move.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, Larry?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Martha, Mary, how do you feel?
Yes, yes.
And, and the chair is in favor. Very good. So we have a continuation. Then any other business with this, Martha?
Not with this, now that it's continued.
Okay, then I would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Have a good evening. I would ask, we can never continue dates, so we're good to go. Good.
And the sidewalks on the 12th.
Right, on the 12th at 10.
10 a.m.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Martha, where are we with our agenda right now?
You know, I would say there's really nothing pressing on the agenda. We had some, some liaison reports, which I think probably skip over. The one thing I would like to remind everybody of is that tomorrow at 3:00, we have the 108 Main Street.
Thank you.
Where is it again?
108 Main Street.
108 Main, okay, okay. And then it's 3:00, 3:00, correct?
3:00, right.
Okay, okay, okay.
And it's, and there's no street number right there, but you'll see, you know, I'll try to get there a little early, so you'll see my car and some other people gathered around.
And I would suggest bug spray because it's going to be a little bit buggy in there.
Sorry, say again?
A bug spray.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Wooded lot.
It's all wooded.
Can we release our council for the evening?
I think we can, unless there's anything you'd like to share with us.
I'm here. Your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
We're, we're very, very, very happy that you're here with us this evening. We thank you for your participation.
Thanks for having me.
Okay. Since I think that's it, Martha, for tonight, at 10:30?
I think that could be it for tonight.
Well, 10:29, we should probably stretch it out for, you know, just so we can get a nice round number. I'd entertain a motion. Could you, John?
Motion, John.
There's a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I don't see any. Great. All in favor? Let's see, Larry, roll call.
Yes.
All right, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary, how do you think?
Yes, indeedy.
All right, I'm in favor for that, too. Everyone, thank you very much. I know it was a long meeting. Martha, thank you very much.